Is he ready? You ready?
Right now.
Okay. The planning and zoning meeting for November 6, 2019 will now come to order. Please stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have Rockwell, please?
Chairman Williams.
Here.
Vice Chairman Severs.
Here.
Member Spidele.
Here.
Member Bobbitt.
Here.
Member Richardson.
Here.
Member Hare.
Then we have Quorum. Next is approval of minutes for October 16, 2019. So moved?
Second.
Second. Was Mr. Richardson, were you chiming in to?
To make one correction.
Okay.
The spelling of Member Spidele.
Oh, yeah, I saw that already. Okay. Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All persons to anticipate speaking on any public hearing item must first fill out the oath card to be heard on that agenda item and sign the oath card contained thereon. These cards are located on the table near the entrance to council chamber or may be obtained from the recording secretary. This meeting will be conducted in accordance to procedures adopted in Resolution 24-1997. Those speaking in favor of a request will be heard first, those opposed will be heard second, and those who wish to make a public comment on an item will speak third. The applicant may make a brief rebuttal if necessary. A representative from either side for or against may cross-examine the witness. Anyone who speaks is considered a witness. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents you desire the commission to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the recording secretary.
Staff, has all items been properly advertised?
Yes.
And has anybody on the commission had the opportunity to speak to anybody about the items coming before us? Sir, there was no psych developments, was there?
Just right.
Well, I guess there was one more visit, yeah.
Right away.
Alright, that's fine. So, is that a no? Okay. So with that, Brad, if you would start with the first item?
The first item is the election of officers. There's a requirement that was supposed to elect a secretary.
Alright, so, that's right, we had, uh... Member Chambers resigned, so we have an opening for the secretary. So we will take nominations for that position. Okay?
If I may just fill in a bit of information for anyone who may not know, the bylaws provide a bit of information about the role of the secretary. It says that the chairman, of course, presides over the meetings, the vice chairman is who shall serve in his absence, and for the, a secretary who shall in the absence of the chairman and the vice chairman, or in the event of their inability to act, preside at all meetings and shall have the power to function in the same capacity as the chairman. That's what the bylaws provide about this position.
Okay.
Alright, again, I'll nominate Mr. Richardson.
Okay.
A second.
Okay. Is there any other nominations?
I'm trying to decide if I declined.
Yeah, that's right, do you accept the nomination?
Okay.
Is that, that's a yes?
Yes.
Okay, there's no go-bags. Alright, is there any other nominations? Alright, seeing none? I guess, how do you want to do this?
All those in favor.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, unanimous decision.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thanks. Alright, next item, please.
So the next item is about the Indian River Lagoon. If you remember at your previous workshop earlier this last month, there was a request by the commissioner, several questions about what the city is doing related to protecting the Indian River Lagoon. So we offer to do a presentation for you. Public Works will give a presentation on the latest update of our protection of the Indian River Lagoon related to the Basin Management Action Plan. So I'll turn it over to Sandy Rela and Kevin Cook.
Hi, I'm Sandy Rela, I'm the Public Works Deputy Director. This is Kevin Cook, the Public Works Director. We have been asked to just give a brief update on what you guys have heard is called the BMAP, or the Basin Management Action Plan. Before the BMAP was established, a total maximum daily load needed to be established, what a TM, or a TMDL. What a TMDL is, is a scientific determination of the maximum amount of a given pollutant that a surface water can absorb and still meet the water quality standards that protect human health and aquatic life. So got that? So pretty much what it means is, there's a, a number, a pounds per year of a certain pollutant, yet that amount that can go into a body of water, and that body of water still be healthy. Those thresholds are set by the Florida Administrative Code. The Indian River Lagoon does not meet these standards for nitrogen and phosphorus, for nutrients, so it is considered impaired. So TMDLs were established in 2009 for the IRL for both nitrogen and phosphorus. So because of that, a Basin Management Action Plan, or BMAP, was required to be developed. Now, these numbers aren't static, they are reviewed every five years by the FDP, so if there's new science, if there's new technology to determine a better, you know, a better number, they are reviewed and adjusted. So the BMAP, what is a BMAP? It's the, pretty much the blueprint, blueprint for restoring impaired waters by reducing pollutant loadings to meet the allowable loadings established in the TMDL. So our IRL BMAP was adopted in January 2013, and it creates a 15-year plan that establishes reduction requirements to meet those TMDLs. It's a living document, it's updated annually, I have to report to the DEP every year what projects are completed, what are underway, what are in design, and the, our current pollutant loading reductions. So the BMAP requires the city to create strategies and implement projects to reduce nitrogen and phosphorus to the Indian River Lagoon. It's adopted by secretarial order and is enforceable, so we have to follow it. So the BMAP numbers, by 2028, the city is required to reduce nitrogen by about 44,000 pounds per year, and phosphorus by about 10,000 pounds per year. When the BMAP was set up, it was kind of split into three five-year sections to help us measure where we're, where we're at, our status, and to see how well we're doing. So Phase 1 went from 2013 to 2018, we completed 100% of the requirements for that phase. We're currently in Phase 2, just a little under two years into it, and we're at, with our currently installed projects, we're at 50% of our nitrogen requirements and 60% of our phosphorus required reductions, so we're ahead of the game by about a year, year or two. Overall, for the entire North Area BMAP, so that's not just us, we're not the only stakeholder, there's the county and other areas that are also required to follow the BMAP. Through December 2018, so that's the first five years of the 15-year BMAP, we had already gotten to 44% of the required TN reductions and 57% of the required phosphorus reductions, so everybody seems to be a little bit ahead on the, on the timeline. So our projects that are in the BMAP, here's a list of, of all the projects, we got the Chain of Lakes, Senior Center, Drayfield, Stormwater Ponds, there are some floating vegetative islands and, and a lot of our city-owned ponds, we have littoral zone plantings and a living shoreline site right out here at Main Street. We also have a lot of baffle boxes, I think there's nine up there that we have installed, and we have more in design and, and underway. If you don't know what a baffle box is, it's pretty much an underground structure that goes in line with a stormwater pipe, so before the pipe, the stormwater pipe would just discharge the water straight to the lagoon. When it goes through these boxes, there's chambers, and the chambers kinda, they not only collect the, you know, trash, but they also collect the, the leaves and the grass clippings, and then we come with our vacuum truck and we suck them out, and we take them to the landfill, so those, those, the nitrogen and phosphorus associated with those clippings don't end up in the lagoon.
Is that what you're doing at St. Teresa's right now?
Exactly.
Okay.
And there's also a media filter in these boxes that helps reduce more nitrogen and phosphorus than without the media.
You say mediu?
It's, 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 depends on what the media is, but it's mostly like mulch and a different materials that as the water kind of, it's not as it's flowing through, but as the water's kind of sitting in there, it, it absorbs the nitrogen and phosphorus in the water, so there's, so it stays in the media instead of leaving and going into the lagoon. We also have some ongoing, ongoing programs, probably the biggest one is street sweeping. You know, you think about, we're sweeping the streets just to make them look good, but we actually get a lot of removals from taking, picking up all those leaves and grass clippings from the street. Like in 2018 alone, we picked up approximately 3 million pounds of debris, which equated to 1,800 pounds of nitrogen and 1,200 pounds of phosphorus for that whole year. We also get credits for any of our educational efforts, like brochures and newsletters, or any of the educational signing. So here's a map of all of our basins that discharge to the lagoon. All the ones in orange already have a BMAP, BMAP project completed, those are the little yellow dots if you can see them or not, or underway. We, we're working our way down, as you can see, we have some more to work, a couple more to work on the end, you know, the south end of town. Our total cost of all of our BMAP projects was about $15 million. We've received about 5.5 million in grants for those projects, these are stormwater projects, and about 7 million from the Stormwater Utility, plus another 3 million with cost-share stakeholder sharing mostly the county with Chain of Lakes. And I know you've all heard of the Save the Lagoon tax. We, we've received in the first two years, 700,000 in grant funding, mostly for baffle boxes and some of those floating islands, and we've applied for another 160 in this cycle that just opened up. These are all stormwater money. I know Water Resources, they've also received an $8 million grant for reclaim water upgrade for that facility, and 200,000 in sewer lateral repairs. So we're definitely doing our best to utilize these funds. And then this is just an overview of the FY20 stormwater budget. As you can see, there's 250,000 dollars, new dollars to be put into water quality projects, but if you look below it, you can see we currently have 2.5 million in active water quality projects, so it just shows we're utilizing grant funding and cost-share programs, you know, to implement more of these projects to reduce the loadings to the IRL. That's all I got. Any questions?
Mr. Bobbitt.
Have you compared our BMAP to other county municipality BMAPs?
Well, we're all kind of in one BMAP. Do you mean the status of where we're at?
Like, kind of where are we ranking in our efforts with other municipalities and bervard?
I haven't looked at a ranking for, you know, to see who's above, above everybody, especially because of this new Save the Lagoon tax. We're actually kind of in the process of working together with everyone, so we'll actually share credits with the county, so the projects we do will share with the rest of the people in the North IRL, and the projects they do, they're gonna share credits. So if we actually follow the full 10-year plan like it was laid out for the tax, we should meet and exceed the required TMDL.
Okay, thank you. One of the questions that I had, well, a few questions I had, was when you were giving out the numbers that where we've reduced up to 50% at this portion, and so what I was trying to figure out is, are those calculations from all of it, and I think you're saying that the entire Indian River Lagoon, which they've been doing muck removal down south, but not in the north at this point?
But 50% is the city of Titusville's.
That's, that's...
That, that, there are requirements, yeah, so we're at 50% of our requirements. So each municipal, each stakeholder is required to reduce a certain amount, you know, depending on land area.
So is that for the input or the actual river itself?
It's for the required reduction, so the BMAP shows that you have to, you have to reduce 40,000 pounds per year in this 15 years.
Right, but what I'm saying is, so if I was to go do a sample on the Indian River Lagoon, and so basically what you're saying, or what I'm gathering is, is that it has basically so many pounds per volume, and are you, it sounded to me like you were saying we had to reduce it, or we have reduced it, by 50% in the, in this first cycle?
The loading is based upon the land use, so every land use is assigned nitrogen and phosphorus values, so as you take a land from nature to a developed, it, it increases nitrogen and phosphorus output. So the BMAP is reducing it back to natural land.
And that's why I was asking?
So it's not the river itself, it's what, yeah, it's what we're outputting to the river that's being addressed.
And so, so we've reduced the potentials for the input by 50% at this point through the baffle boxes, through stormwater changes, stormwater upgrades?
Yes.
Fertilizer ordinance, the flood control landscape ordinance, those six things all count, yes.
So does, what does the plan, does the plan actual work on the river, or is it basically the inputs to the river? To me, it's a long-term solution, I understand that. It's, when I say long-term, this is the fix for the long-term solution. You can't just clean out the muck and then it continue to, uh, collect in. I understand that part, so but what I'm asking is, does the BMAP include any of the, um, markers or the, um, quality of the river included in that? Or is it only the inputs?
There is, you can get credits for mucking, like the, the demucking that the county does, they, they can, they can go and get credits towards their required reductions in the BMAP. It is a little difficult to get those credits, but it is, it is possible. The, the TMDL is where you want to look at your water quality. This BMAP is, these are the numbers you have to get, to get to that water quality. So every five years, when they reassess the water quality of, of the lagoon, is when they'll look at the actual, have things change, you know, at the seagrasses, and if that, those numbers need to change.
So when they were going through and looking at the Indian River Lagoon tax, one of the main questions that I asked them at the time was if they had an integrated master schedule. I'm more geared towards production, but when I was saying that is, when I was asking that, was, are you doing a scheduled cleanup? Is there certain, like muck raking, you're scheduling, muck raking, sorry, little off, cleaning up the muck, um, making the changes for the inputs, using, was it oyster?
Oyster reefs, yep.
Right. So the reason why I'm asking that is, we haven't done the muck removal yet, and I asked, I was being very specific when I asked him this, when are we going to see muck removal in the north? And what I've seen is, now I see the encouragement of the oyster beds to be laid, which will make the river look really nice, but then when they come in and do muck removal, then you're starting all over, and so you're kind of wasting your time on, on doing that. But I've been seeing that happen, I've been seeing flyers, just in my condominium association, they're encouraging a lot of groups to do this, and so the reason why I bring up integrated master schedule is, this would be ahead of the time, and now it's potentially wasting that time. Do you follow what I'm saying?
I can tell you, all those things are, are projects that are in, in the Save the Lagoon Plan, I don't know if they're scheduled, if muck is scheduled before the type of, those type of projects, but...
I was assured that they had this.
I think that would be a great suggestion to the oversight committee.
And the consultant did lay out the full 10 years?
Yeah.
So they did schedule projects, and what, at least for what we've done with the city, is we're asking to substitute our projects sooner, because we have them ready to go, so we're pulling stormwater that would have been year seven to year two. We put a lot to year zero, so did Melbourne. So, now I do know the muck, they've run into a lot of permitting on, that has delayed them years, because that is pushing permitting to federal levels, and they've really run into a lot of permitting on their side of the muck.
My understanding is, is they're supposed to be working on the state level to clear that up, if I, I mean, I'm not saying that they did that, obviously, but...
Army Corps is a different monster, so it's harder, but I know that, that the county staff is working that effort, but I, the ones I've seen, their pricing has gone way up, and they've been delayed years on their muck removals.
My concern is basically, I see the projects down south, I see UGALI as like a target area, and I'm like, I don't care about UGALI, I care about Titusville, this is, and so I know that our money is going towards this, I know that, um, we care just as much, and I would have thought that they would have, um, targeted multiple areas at the same time, rather than just the south.
I know that there is a north project in there, I don't know what, I, I believe they've started the permitting process, but I can't tell you for sure or what the status is of it, but we can look into that.
And I believe it's north of town.
Mm-hmm, yeah, MENS.
Because they're using the MENS pole site.
Yeah.
As far as the, the baffle boxes and all that, I've seen them go in, I've seen some of the projects, I think it's awesome, I appreciate you guys' efforts on this, and I would love to see the, the river turn blue again, so I have other questions. Vice Chairman Severs.
Thank you for your presentation. I've been a resident of Titusville, North Bervard, for 50 years, and obviously have seen significant changes in the water quality, the fish, the seagrass, et cetera, in the Indian River Lagoon, and it concerns me greatly. My first question is, what new additional rules, regulations, strategy are proposed within the 2040 Comprehensive Plan compared to existing rules and regulations? I've asked this before, right?
Yeah. So we worked with all the different departments to see what we can do as far as revising the, or carrying over a lot of policies from the current comprehensive plan to the new one. And remember, most of the changes that are going on in the new comprehensive plan are land use related. So a lot of the policies related to the Indian River Lagoon or environmental policies, we tried to maintain as much as possible the same language, although you did hear some, some, some concerns about some minor changes here that we, that from the public have think, or have told us that are very significant, so. One thing that I think is positive is that we did put in there was a policy that's currently not in the plan, that says that we are pretty much adopting by reference the BMAP, which is not stated in the current plan right now. And that's, we put an extra policy inside the current, the new plan that says specifically the BMAP. Now, if the new plan is not adopted, there's always the option of taking that policy that we drafted and carrying it over into, into the current plan, so that's where we, where we went with so far, that's when we worked with the Public Works Department to come up with some new language in the plan.
Well, well, my concern is, I previously expressed, is that, uh, we have all these onsite retention ponds and filtrations, and all I know is the water quality and the condition of the Indian River Lagoon has diminished with all these St. John's rules and regulations. They do not appear to me to be adequate, there's something wrong. And in my mind, since this is a 2040 plan, we need to look ahead and do things that are proactive and, and, and part of the concern I look at in the Comprehensive Plan, five-year schedule of capital improvements for stormwater, $200,000. I mean, the city, in my mind, needs to be more proactive, even if the taxpayers here have to pay more money, to improve the water quality being discharged in the Indian River. And let me, if you could, just hand that to, and hand that down, this is a photograph I took, I live on the Indian River, and it's a photograph I took after a rain in May. Actually, it looked a lot worse before I took that photograph, but as you can see, this is at the water's edge, and all the grasses and, and leaves and, um, grass clippings and pine needles, et cetera, that got discharged into the Indian River Lagoon. Obviously, I assume that's bad, what was discharged, and I have to say... And I have to say, apparently, we're not doing enough. Uh, for example, right up the street from where I reside and that discharged from the Moonlight Drive-In right along there, there probably ought to be a baffle box or something installed and I would hope there, there could be or would be. But there needs to be additional measures made and in additional requirements installed in the comprehensive plan because I think we're not doing enough and we need to do more. And just to rely upon the county's tax, which we're all paying, and rely upon somebody else or being told we have a map that we have, requirements we have to comply with from a comprehensive planning, looking forward to the future, is not enough. And, um, I, I think we need input from the citizens as to what they would like to have. It's, um, in my mind, we need to do more. I mean, all I have to, I mean, even, I don't know whether, for example, there was if, uh, a group that's sponsoring, uh, clam restoration. I don't know whether you're familiar with that, a, a guy that's doing that. And they had a big, uh, party, so to speak, raising funds for that, trying to get clams, which help filter the water, uh, back in the Indian River Lagoon. I mean, I for one, I plant Spartina grass on my shoreline. I have no discharge of anything and towards the river. And a lot more people need to do that. They need to be educated, whether it's grass clippings and blowing everything in the yard. I think even just timing, street cleaning around the falling of the leaves. And perhaps you do this, and if you do, great. But you have to time when to go down the street with a street sweeper if it's near discharges into the Indian River Lagoon and not be out in Hickory Hills. Bless their heart, they want their streets cleaned also, and I understand that. But we need to be strategic in what we're doing and maybe we're doing all those things. But it, it's important if we are serious about our comprehensive plan and serious about protecting the Indian River Lagoon, improving the water quality of the Indian River Lagoon.
We can address a couple of things. The, the CIE for one, um, when we provided that, we are asked to provide those, the things that deal with concurrency. What are qualities and that concurrency measures, or what are quality projects that are not recorded? Our capital improvement program for the stormwater utility is millions of dollars. We hold a four million dollar right now active. We fund another half to a million every year. So we do not have all that showing in the CIE the same way. If you look at our roadside, you won't see our repairs. You only see capacity. So we're not reporting everything in the CIE that is in the city's five-year capital improvement program. So if you take a look at the budget, we do house everything within that program. And it is much larger than what's being reported in the CIE because that's concurrency-related items, not. So I think what they're reporting is sliplining, which is maintenance of keeping the system moving, not maintenance of our improvements, not adding ponds, anything of that nature. The outfall you mentioned near Moonlight, we have a baffle box directly upstream from that because it turns into a DOT right away at US1. So actually on Roger, we buried it, our largest baffle box on Roger right now. It takes the pipe off Sycamore, turns into it, filters and drains it, cleans it for our side. We couldn't do the other side because it's all DOTs. That's the reason why. That's one of the few we actually push further west. We like to be on the river. We couldn't get that one there. We can look at the street sweeping timing. I'll be honest with you, unfortunately, the last couple of times, last couple of years, we've had tropical storms, hurricanes. Our sweepers have been used for that purpose more. So they've had to work the routes with our debris cleanup, so a little different.
That, that May rain is just an ordinary rain in May. And you can see how much went down into the river.
Yeah.
It's unbelievable.
Yeah, and I will say from ours, so we, we ranked all the outfalls in the city for the Indian River Lagoon were ranked as a high, medium, and low. Uh, that is on their nutrient loading. So we had our consultant model all our outfalls and tell us there's a bracket for the high, with a bracket for medium and low. We've eliminated, all the highs and mediums are all covered now. But we do have a number of low ones. Uh, I'll give you an example of the commons, this building that have three pipes and two inlets. They don't get a baffle box at a two hundred thousand dollar investment because the, the cleaning is going to be ten pounds. So the investment in that, the return is very little compared to putting the baffles in at St. Teresa where we're getting fifteen hundred pounds of removal at the same price. So we are economically taking the best boxes first. But there are going to be small ones, direct outfalls wherever they may just have two inlets, that are going to be unprotected until the time comes that it's economically feasible to do them. Or switching them out to a different technology from baffle boxes to inlet filters, uh, tree boxes, things of that nature. We've tried to take the biggest bites of the apple the first seven years. We've knocked off all the large basins, South Street, the real giant ones that get the largest amount of loading. That's why we're so far ahead is we've been knocking off the big ones first. Uh, now we're going to get into the smaller ones. You're going to see more residential improvements, tree boxes, filtration at a smaller level. They're not going to earn any Save the Lagoon funds really because they're going to only get paid for the pound. But the investments are going to shift from large projects to small projects as we move forward. So, so that's kind of where the, the, the shifting is going to start taking. Um, now we can, I don't know if we can work on the CIE, maybe amending what it looks like to put in informational only items to add in the projects that are just our full blanket of projects, if that, if that feels, if that fits better. It's a little, you know, we provide the plan within a budget. But we can, we can work with Brad on how to report that better, so, make a better feel for it. And, and what you're asking about enhancing the St. John's rules, I mean, development already faces where they do have to do a modeling for nitrogen pre-post to show that the, the development discharges less at or less the nitrogen and phosphorus levels than they did before. So they're doing a little more than a one-inch over site that they used to have to do. I mean, we can look at that with, with development community. That's what they would like to see an enhancement on that, to have them actually go into a zero impact or negative impact. That'd be something that would be worked out, honestly.
I think, I think those are excellent suggestions. And I'd like to see some of them in the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, that, that crosses, you know, that's not our hat. We're the, we're the stormwater utility. We execute the stormwater system, but that's the development side. But that's, certainly we can assist if that's something they, that we should be looked at.
Good. Mr. Severs?
I'm good.
Member Spidey.
Um, I have a question concerning commercial lawn businesses, both spraying and fertilizing regulations. And is there an issue with that?
It's red.
We have a fertilizer ordinance. Um, it's been a while since I've, um, since it was brought up here, so I can't remember all the specifics. But there are, there are requirements, like there's the summer ban where they can't use anything with, um, phos, where they can't use anything with phosphorus all year round.
I'm aware of that. I just want to know if your commercial businesses are following those ordinances and what's the regulation?
Um, that would, those would be, you know, those would be reported to code enforcement. I, sometimes they'll call me if there's questions, but I don't get a lot of questions from them, so I'm not, I don't, I don't see a lot of reports on that.
So that only goes to code enforcement?
Yeah, I'm, yeah.
So who, who reports that? The property owner?
Yeah, I mean, it's hard, it's, it's a hard ordinance to regulate.
It's not regulated.
Yeah, it's a very hard order because you can't see, you know, you don't know what fertilizer they put down. So we, we do have, um, brochures there when, um, when the BTR, the Business Tax License is renewed. There's a brochure that goes in there that explains the fertilizer ordinance and all of the requirements every year when they renew it. So it's, it's more of a, um, on our end, an educational thing. Um, I don't know how they specifically regulate the code.
So if you want to do it, you do it, and if you don't, you don't, okay. What about lawn, lawn care businesses?
Same thing.
I think it's exactly what Mr. Severs and I are talking about.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, it's the same thing as the commercial.
It's a lot, you know, I, I know that you have a street sweeping and, and that is to be applauded. But, um, it, it's the, it's lawn services that are putting an awful lot of trash down each storm drain on a weekly basis.
I can, I can contact.
Along the Indian River avenue.
I can contact code enforcement and have them, you know.
And on steady.
Look at it.
Property. But you don't do that. That's not you. Okay, thanks.
So then, Mayor Bobbitt.
What have we done to prevent like sewage discharges and spills?
Unfortunately, that's not us either. That's the, uh, Water Resources Department. We do the stormwater. So, um, I know he, um, like I said, he applied for two hundred thousand in the last, um, Save the Lagoon plan to do some lateral repairs. Um, uh, I don't know where, where, what status he is with, with that. And I believe after the last spill, they implemented a program to inspect all of the older lines along the lagoon, but I don't have any of the specifics. That's for the Water Resources Department.
All right, um, it just seems like that would be like something that we really definitely want to focus on because our last spill was close to eight hundred and seventy thousand gallons. And that's a lot of phosphorus, which can also help contribute to balloons and everything else and pretty much undo everything that you're doing. So just, I would like to see someone kind of, I would like to answer or get an answer of what we are doing and prevent those from happening again. Because I know Nerd City just had one, uh, a few weeks ago. So it just seems like every time we take a step forward, there's a spill that brings us back.
We can check with the Water Resources Department and get an answer for you.
Yeah, I, I know that after the, the spill that happened near South Street, they, because that was related to a dead-end line that wasn't capped properly from the nineteen seventies, they did go back and recheck lines, a number of dead-end enforcement to make sure that that same occurrence couldn't happen again. And I believe in their five-year plan, they are looking at methodology to move the lift stations off of the Indian River Lagoon, the shoreline lift stations to be relocated and moved away to a new master. But those are obviously long-term, high-value projects. So we can, we can get, I'm sure Sean can update what, what water is looking for.
So I know that, um, originally the Indian River Lagoon Committee, um, I, I know that there was a lot of debate about them using money, that money for sewers. And I think they ended up coming in and saying they recommended that, correct?
I think there's still debate.
Okay, yeah.
There's some that, yeah, there's some that want it really, and there's some that don't. So, um, we just, as of, I think, last week, were required for this, to put in sewers projects. So I think that debate will come up again. Um, there are some, you know, and some commissioners that think it's a good idea, some that don't. So I think it's still under debate.
Right. So anyway, um, what I wanted to talk to you about was, I wanted to go back to, um, is there any way, one of the things that I see, um, is you have newer technologies and mowers. And what they do is they don't pick up the grass clippings now and they leave it down. So, um, you, I know that on one hand, they say that, you know, it's good for the grass. It's, you know, they don't have to pick it up. There's, in reality, what happens is every time, like where I live, if you were to walk on the grass, I mean, you got it all over you. Is there a way that maybe the city can consider of controlling that, at least in sections? I, I mean, we're right on the, the water. And I can imagine the amount of grass clippings that actually go in directly into the water from just where I live. And so I'm, I'm just bringing this up. I'm sure you guys have thought about it a million times. But, um, you know, if there's an opportunity to, to address some of these, as well as I'm sure you really don't want grass clippings in your stormwater. But, um, the other part of that, going back to, um, we, years ago, I thought we passed ordinance to where we don't want them blowing grass clippings. Is there any type of educational program that the city has to inform? Because, I mean, I, yes, I see, you know, the average Joe doing it. I, I see that. But then I, I'm driving down the road and I see professional lawn care doing it. They're the ones you really notice, right? So is there a, a way to educate these businesses? Um, just say, hey, huh?
Uh, to kind of answer that and just to, to make you aware, uh, the Titusville Environmental Commission just recently sent a resolution to council, um, which got adopted. Uh, there's a program called Lagoon Friendly Lawns, which is exactly, that's an education program. And it's, um, kind of pure motivated to get homeowners to start policing their clippings, reducing nitrogen and fertilizer and everything else like that. Uh, there's going to be a link on the, the website soon. And, uh, I know Keeper of Our Beautiful is going to start pushing that in this area. Um, but it just recently got passed through council and it's going to start building an education within the city.
Good. So, you know, I, I realize that that's a, um, it's an easy, to me, it's an easy win. But even if, uh, if we can, it's not like I, I feel like we should overmandate and create rule after rule after rule. But I think the, the situation that we're in where, as I say, the river is a resource for us. Um, this is what makes Titusville a lot of money. People come here from all over, well, now the world, they say, but, um, so, you know, you go back twenty years and I, I mean, I used to be able to look from my balcony and I could see every fish in, in the water. And I even used to see this old tire, tire that was down there. I saw it for years and years and years. Um, but now I don't see it. Imagine that, right? Point is, is that, um, you know, I, I would love to see Titusville change into a more recreational, um, activities on the river. I mean, we see that trend starting to happen now. But, you know, clean river is very important. People go to Key West, well, they go to the Keys for that clean water. And, um, to me, there's no difference between Key West and Merritt Island, really. I, I, if, if you were to drop me in both locations and not tell me where I'm at, it looks to me the same. But, but maybe that's just me, but, um, but I would love to see our water quality back to what it used to be. And I think these are some things, um, although they seem trivial, I think the grass clippings make a major, um, it's a, it's a major hit on the river. I don't see any more questions for you guys. Is there anything else you'd like to add or?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. I appreciate you guys coming. And we will go to the next item, please. I think this item will address the front line here, right, the next item?
I got that in person.
The next item is, um, conditional use permit. This is for number six of this year for Elk's Lodge. And I'm going to turn it over to our new senior planner, Gabriel Quintez, who will present it for you tonight.
Thank you. The subject property consists of several existing units, uh, within the Titusville Mall. Uh, the property has a land use designation of commercial high intensity and is zoned regional commercial, uh, which requires a conditional use permit to allow a private club. Existing uses to the north of the mall consist of office and retail uses, uh, while uses to the south consist primarily of single-family residences. East of the property are two auto services businesses in the form of a car wash and a tire store and townhouses across US1, while west of the property lie several gas stations and retail stores. Uh, the applicant proposes to occupy approximately thirty-four hundred square feet within the mall and will operate a, a private club, the Elk's Lodge, within the, um, mall units. And staff is recommending approval of the application subject to the condition that the use be permitted to occupy five thousand square feet within the mall. And this concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Okay, can we have the applicant come up? Or women, is there questions of staff? Nope. All right, can we have the applicant come up?
Yeah, Bob Swink.
Thank you, thank you for playing, for working with us on this. All new to us and, um, I'm just here, I'm Bob Swink. Uh, I am one of the officers of our lodge. We have our exalted ruler or president of our lodge with us tonight and our, uh, uh, board of trustees. So, um, here really counted to answer any questions that you might have, uh, as far as what we're doing. We sold our big lodge over on 405. Uh, it got a little too big for us and, uh, so we're downsizing. We're, um, leasing this property in the mall temporarily until we can find a place to build or to buy, uh, to replace our other lodge, downsizing. So, uh, that's where we are at the present time. Once we get approval, uh, we will start doing some remodeling in the lodge and, um, to make sure it's up to our standards as a lodge. So I'll be here glad to answer any questions that any of you might have. So I'll be here glad to answer any questions that any of you might have.
You have questions? Secretary Richardson?
I'm not used to that. Um, the hours of operation are noted in item seven on page four. Four to nine P M. Thursday and Friday, three to nine P M. In all those, do you have any problem with those hours of operation?
No, um, most of our, um, membership is, um,
elderly and they go to bed eight-thirty, just like I do.
And, um, there, there was a time when we at our lodge that, you know, we would close it down at twelve, one or two o'clock in the morning. Uh, those times pretty much passed. Um, but we are aware of the, uh, issues with the mall. The exterior doors are out pushed doors. They are actually locked at ten o'clock once the cleaning crew has gone. But, uh, we have, we do have an exit from, uh, the lodge, uh, out to the sidewalk that would be, uh, our own exit. And so it would be not a problem leaving. And of course, the doors would be locked at nine o'clock as far as coming in.
As I'm looking at the location, it's approximately where the original.
Yeah, it's where the.
Mercy restaurant was.
Lord Have Mercy Restaurant was, exactly. And, uh.
Eye doctor years ago.
Yeah, before my time on, on that one. But, yeah, um, there was, and then there was a French restaurant.
Yeah.
Cuisine in there since then. Um, we have, uh, three, three, uh, rooms there, uh, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. And the, uh, number eighteen would be our actual lodge room. Nineteen would be our sitting and area and overflow. And the, uh, twenty would be our bar area, uh, and entertainment. Those are the, those are the three areas, uh, that we would do. And it takes a little bit of remodeling. We've got to put some plumbing, uh, move some plumbing. We're going to have to put it in, but move some plumbing around for our bar area. And, uh, and very little electrical to be done. But, um, those are the things that we'll also have to bring before, um, the planning and, and, uh, I get permission to do all these things as well.
Yes.
No, it's not for you.
The building department?
Building department.
Yeah.
That's the, after Tuesday, that'll be our next step.
Is that it? Okay, member Spidel.
Uh, you may have answered my question.
Okay.
So sale of alcohol?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and s- s- tell me the hours of operation again?
Uh, from, uh, four to nine, um, Monday through, uh, Thursday, uh, three to nine on Friday. And we're closed on Saturday and Sunday, except for Saturday is special occasions, uh, if we have a lease or something of that nature, uh, that we want there as far as, um, special occasions.
So it's on the north side where?
Where the Lord Have Mercy, um, used to be.
I remember that, okay. And then does it go all the way south or what?
It goes up to the mall office, right there on the, uh, on the corner. And if you, if you continue walking, you, you'll go into the, um, uh, department store there.
Bells or?
Bells, Bell's.
Whatever that, is that bells? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
It is the, it is the main entrance really to the lodge, I mean, to the mall. And, um, we get a lot of traffic in there, a lot of walkers.
Yeah.
And, uh, we are, uh, it will make us very visible, uh, to the community, which is what we like. You know, we, we're, um, we're pretty old for this community, too. We've got sixty years with Titusville.
Best people on earth, right?
Yeah. And we're just.
Do you still, uh, do you still do service projects in the community?
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, we just had, um, uh, a hoop shoot contest for our kids, for the kids. And we partnered with the YMCA on that one to use their gymnasium. Uh, we had twenty-two kids come in. This is a national hoop shoot, uh, or free throw contest for these kids. And it doesn't cost them anything to, to do. And, uh, as long as they progress, they could go to national championships up in Chicago, Illinois.
So your visibility may increase.
We hope so, yes. Um, we, the big lodge that we had down on four oh five, um, with the trees and the curve, you know, a lot of people say, well, where is the Elks Lodge?
Don't cut down those trees.
No, no, no. We're not going to make, we're not, that's no longer our property anyways, so. But yeah, that's, uh, uh, we do like the visibility. And, um, the next project we're going to have is to build a lodge or to purchase a lodge. And here again, visibility is one of our location, location, location.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right, while you're still up there, I had a question for staff. So in here, they, they gave the hours of operation. But it says that the staff doesn't believe it's necessary to propose a condition limiting the hours. So there's no condition. Right, so if they wanted to open up at eight A M., if they had, there's no conditions, they, it was, this is just a mentioning of the hours, correct?
Correct.
All right, so, and then that, I know that, so I was involved in nonprofit for many, many years. And I know that, um, I'm just bringing this up because you just never know. You may have something that where you need to, you, I mean, surely you guys have been doing this for many years and you know that you need to have access in and out. And you may have a project start early in the morning. And I just wanted to make sure that, that these hours weren't going to limit you.
No.
And, um, so there's no conditions and the hours operations are.
And with the, and, you know, we understand it, like the secretary has hours in the morning for, for doing his work, secretary and treasurer. The treasurer has, well, you know, we have to put our deposits in at, at the bank. We try to get those in as early as possible. The actual hours for operation are going to be where our members can come in and enjoy our, our, uh, our lodge and our, you know, camaraderie. And, um, and just be a part of the, the things. There, there's some things that we do, uh, out in the community that we, you know, we don't have any limits on time. You know, from, from gift wrapping at Walmart to, uh, you know, a little bit of everything. So, uh, we're, we're out there a lot. But behind closed doors, there's, I mean, there's very little that's, that we can do as far as the mall is concerned. We have, we have to go by their times.
Right.
Except we do have access from the street, uh, on their sidewalk back there for one, one entrance and one exit. So. But the main entrance and exit for our members would be the mall entrance.
Okay, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there other cards?
Yes, sir.
All right, so we'll close.
As a further note, um, I just wanted to clarify that the, um, the units shown on the conceptual site plan, um, those are not binding. So, um, if this were approved, they would be able to locate anywhere within the mall, uh, just with the limitation of five thousand square feet.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, hold on, I got one. Uh, Secretary Richardson? All right, it's a member of Bobbit?
Uh, just for the record, I'd like to disclose that, um, my grandfather was a, a lifetime member of that lodge. And I was a former member and a former Esquire of that lodge. So just for public record and everything else, just wanted to disclose that.
From one former Esquire to another former Esquire.
Nice.
Thank you. And come back and join us anytime you'd like.
Thank you.
It would, it would behoove me to ask, you know. Um, and, uh, thank you very much, Eric. And, uh, I don't think that I'll ever live long enough to, uh, get my membership up long enough to be a lifetime member, but I will be a member for life. So, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll close this item. If the public can bring it back for the board, is there a motion on this item?
So moved. I move that we approve, uh, ask, uh, council to approve conditional use permit number six dash twenty nineteen.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Can we take a roll call on this vote?
By Chairman Severs?
Yes.
Member Spidel?
Yes.
Member Hare?
Yes.
Member Bobbit?
Yes.
Secretary Richardson?
Yes.
Chairman Williams?
Yes. All right, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item, please.
So this item, I'll take over. Um, this is a application to vacate public right of way. Uh, this is on page, uh, thirty-one of your packet. So Mr. B. Rice submitted an application on behalf of APM Properties Incorporated for property located on South Street. I'll show you the map in a moment where this is. And this is to vacate some platted, uh, alleyways, ten-foot wide alleyways that were platted, in the eighteen eighties, it looks like. So on page thirty-three, you'll see this, the first page of the staff report. This is for property that's located at twelve hundred South Street. Um, thank you. So this property, as you can see, uh, in red there on the aerial, those are the public right of ways that are being requested to be vacated. And this is on a vacant piece of property in the north side of South Street, at twelve hundred South Street. The proposal, or the, the intent, I believe, from the applicant is to put townhomes there, but we do not have a formal site plan and review for that. This is the zoning map. So the zoning on the property is residential three, or two, excuse me, that's, or, I'm sorry, residential three. That's a multifamily zoning district and that allows up to fifteen units per acre. The southern third of the property has a land use of downtown mixed use. And the north, two-thirds of the property have a land use that's residential high. As you can see in red there on the illustration on the right side, that is, those are the alleyways that are proposed to be vacated. So this is all under one unified control, one deed, but it's, the property is bisected by these platted alleyways. A lot of these blocks in this neighborhood were platted that way. This is an old style of plating, uh, neighborhoods and cities with short blocks like this with alleyways where they would have townhomes or single-family homes with rear-loaded garages or rear-loaded storage areas. That was the purpose behind this. And so you see this in a lot of old, uh, cities, older centers of cities. So that's the end of that presentation. But let me just briefly go through the criteria that we have to use in order to, um, consider approval of vacating public rights away. So on page thirty-three of your packet is the first page of the staff report. In two thousand and fourteen, there was a, a big issue with a particular alleyway in the Indian River City neighborhood where the public came out in opposition to a particular, uh, request to vacate an alleyway. And so in response to that, the city council asked us to, to adopt ordinance number forty-nine of that year, two thousand and fourteen. Uh, that included new criteria for us to utilize whenever there's a new request for, to vacate public right of way. Whether it's alleyways, large pieces of alleyways, end of cul-de-sacs, anything of that sort. Uh, this public right of way is owned publicly by the city of Titusville. Uh, it's not improved in this particular case. So in section seventeen dash thirty-three B of the Code of Ordinances lists the review criteria into which the planning and zoning commission and city council should consider in order, when there's a request to vacate public rights away. Uh, the first criteria is that the consistency, that there's consistent, that is, the request is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. So the most relevant comprehensive plan policy appeared to be in the transportation element of the comprehensive plan, specifically policy dot one point six point two. And it states, "The city may vacate street right of way only if it does not prevent reasonable connection for existing and future public transit, pedestrian, and non-motorized, motorized vehicle trips." So it really leaves it up to the city to determine whether it's appropriate or not. The vacate request will not create a landlocked lot. That's our analysis. However, approval of the request will eliminate potential crocs access points through a platted block. So if the property's ever, uh, developed in some way, you won't have that ability to cross through the block. Uh, the second criteria is to benefit the public future needs and environmental impacts. So benefit to the public. All public rights away are public space. Anybody is allowed to cross and, and stand on that property or walk through that property. Future needs. There could be a future need for it depending on, once it's vacated, it's gone forever. You don't get it back. And so you really have to be careful about, uh, consideration of, of any vacated alleyways and, and public, any, uh, larger pieces of public right of way. And then the environmental impacts, is there going to be an impact on the environment in some way? And I don't see that initially here. So I'll stay here. The request proposed is to vacate a ten-foot wide alleyway owned by the city. Just so you know, that ten-foot wide alleys cannot be improved because our city street standards require at least a, uh, to meet our city's street improvement standards, you have to have a fifty-foot wide alley, uh, right of way. So we do not have plans, as far as I understand, to, to improve alleyways. They, but they could be improved as development comes in, either through easements or, or, um, in conjunction or in partnership with the city. Vacating the alleys will eliminate the public access to the block and their potential use as a rear access point to new development in the future. Number three on the next page, access to publicly accessible waters. This, this is not an issue here. Number four, impacts to utilities, access, and adjacent properties. An adjac- and, uh, an application requires us to submit over a letter from each relevant agency that might have potential interest in that public right of way, such as Florida Power and Gas, City Gas, or either Florida Power and Light, AT&T, Spectrum, our Water Resources Department, Public Works, and the Fire Department. So those were provided to us and neither of this, all of those agencies, uh, told us that they did not have any objection. Uh, advert, and then the last criteria, adverse impacts to historic areas. Now, this property is not located in a historic district or conservation area or in some kind of, uh, historically protected zoning district. However, it does have historic context because has, it was platted in the eighteen eighties, I believe. So losing these alleyways in these neighborhoods, you lose that potential for that type of, a certain type of development. This request will not negatively impact any historically designated areas. However, the alleys were created as part of a gridded plaque approved prior to nineteen hundred. The purpose of the grid system was to facilitate pedestrian movement. Traditionally, the frontages of homes oriented outward toward the local streets into ten-foot wide alleys provided access to garages and storage areas at the rear. Vacating the alleys will eliminate their potential use as rear access points to new development. So our recommendation, based on the criteria, is to deny the request, public, to vacate a public rights away. The applicant should submit a development plan to justify the request to vacate the public rights away. So what we're requesting is the applicant provide to us at least a site plan indicates what they propose to do to help tie in and help, uh, justify the request to vacate public right of way. If the city council, which your recommendation will go to, is inclined to approve the vacate request and the staff recommends and drive, that driveways be constructed as part of an approved plan for a townhome development over the entire vacated right of way. And in fact, the applicant, um, did show us a concept of what they hoped to do that included driveways back there. Uh, another option is to reschedule the vacate request to another date to allow the applicant to, to submit a site plan. So this is not binding, your rec, our recommendation is not binding. This is just a recommendation to you, um, that, uh, from our standpoint, from the community development standpoint, and from the planning standpoint, vacating alleyways should be very carefully considered because once that is done in any, in vacating any public right of way, um, they're gone forever. And you don't have that leverage anymore to ask or, or partner with the property owner for any certain types of development after that. So that's the end of my presentation on this. I'll try and answer any questions you have about it.
Um, I had one question. I'm, I'm looking at the property east of this. I'm looking at the photo map on page, well, I'm looking at page forty-three.
Forty-one, yes.
It's, it's the actual aerial photo.
Yeah.
But I look at that and I see two homes that, it looks like you have, uh, same condition on that property, but you have two homes within the, the alleyway there, which I don't see too many alleyways here, but I'm just, it looks to me like the property next to it probably should be here, in, in here as well, if they've built within the right of way. They have two homes and I imagine that they're pretty old.
Those homes were built, um, just so you know, those lines that you see there, that, that overlay of parcel lines over the aerials.
Yeah.
Those are not geo-referenced. So in other words, they're not a hundred percent accurate. You can't, they're not survey accurate. So the, the information you get, you see on the property appraisers' website or you, or that we download and project on our aerials, the aerials are taken at a certain angle as well. So.
Yeah.
I can't say for sure that they're actually going through those particular homes that were built there. And I can't say for sure without researching that particular project whether those alleyways were actually vacated or not. But yes, that does appear to be the same situation. A lot of these blocks here in this neighborhood are planted the same way.
Well, the other part of that is, that's coming to mind is, um, there, there isn't connectivity within the other, um, lots. Uh, you know, you're looking at, um, one block and that's it. Everything else looks like it's been, I mean, you really can't utilize it. It's lost its function, I guess what I'm saying. Um, the other two questions I have is, so, one of the issues that staff had was that it, the application wasn't complete, didn't come with a, um, a site plan, right?
No, the application's complete for purposes of vacating right of way.
Then what was missing?
What we believe that in order to help inform the decision as to whether, uh, right of way should be vacated, we believe that this should be tied to some kind of plan that you can see and consider.
So is it a requirement or not a requirement?
No, sir, it's not a requirement.
Not a requirement, okay.
For, for purposes of submitting a complete application, no, it is not required.
All right, and then last was. All right, and then last was, because I thought we had another, we, the city doesn't maintain alleyways, correct?
This alleyway is not being maintained by the city, it's not improved.
Some alleyways they do, some alleyway, I just don't know really too many alleyways. I mean, then again, it's not like I, I imagine you know the maps more than I do, but I don't see a lot of alleyways within Titusville.
That is possibly, that's probably true. I'd have to find out from Public Works if they are any particular alleyways in the city that they do maintain.
Okay. That was all I had. Secretary Richardson, I'm going to have to get used to that.
I am too. So the property, the block bounded by Palmetto to the north and south to the south, Granite and Robbins, that property is vacant, right? I don't understand, I can't justify those alleys being there, so, you know, well, I'll wait until the applicant speaks.
Yes, this is, if you have a question for staff?
Can you figure out where this thing is?
Turn on your mic.
Okay, where is it?
Go to page forty-one of your agenda packet.
There's an aerial on page forty-one.
I see that, I still can't figure out where it is.
So it's highlighted in red?
I see that.
So that, that entire block that's bounded by Palmetto?
I can see that.
Okay.
I guess I want to see what it's in relation to. It is vacant, right, this whole kind of square is, this entire block is vacant right this minute?
Correct.
What is to the north of it?
To the north of the block, on the north side of Palmetto?
Yeah.
Okay.
Give me a gas station or something, give me.
I believe those are homes, but I'll verify in just a moment.
It's a who?
Homes.
Yeah, I believe those are residential homes. Because everything along Palmetto is residential, but I'll verify on what type of homes in a moment.
Is this near the railroad tracks? No?
It's west of the railroad tracks.
Oh, it's further west.
Correct.
Near the Sheriff's Department?
Yes, sir, yes. Is that where it's close to?
Wild Ocean is the big park in line to the west.
Okay.
And there's like the little camp.
And then just on the south side, that's where the sheriff's office and DMV is, it's in that bottom-left corner.
Okay, I think I know where it is. Okay, now, thank you.
I'm sorry, there are, there appear to be duplexes on the north side of Palmetto and one single-family home, it seems, according to the aerial.
Is it near Hero's Grill?
Yes, right across the street from.
Okay, I know where it is now. Okay, thank you.
Okay, is that it? All right, so we will open this to the public and have the applicant come up.
Woody Rice?
Woody Rice, five oh five Indian River Avenue. I got this notice of what the staff's recommendation was on Friday. I talked to Brad yesterday. I was shocked to find out they were recommending denial. Okay, absolutely shocked. Here's the reason why. I came into the city of Titusville with pre-application, with a site plan. They went through a review, every staff member saw it, every staff member reviewed it. I got no comment such as this. And actually, what I came in to do is get a fence permit in the city of Titusville because there was illegal dumping on this site. I was going to fence it in ahead of pre-construction, and I was denied the building permit because I couldn't put a fence across the right-of-ways. And I was told, "Vacate the right-of-ways." Okay, I'll do that. Here we are. I vacate the right, now staff is saying, "Oh, well, we're going to deny it now." Okay, really? Okay, first of all, you know, a road is 50 feet, right-of-ways aren't good than that. If staff would do a little research, they'd find what, what's the definition of alley? Oh, it's 20 feet. It's not 10 feet, it's 20 feet. So it can't be used for an alley either, okay? So you're like, okay, you know, so what can it be used for? Okay, maybe utilities. Oh, wait, Mr. Rice has all the letters from all the utility companies saying they have no objections. It hasn't been used in 50 years, and staff wants to hold back and say, "Well, you know, we might use it in the next 50 years." Well, I wonder why things are hard to develop sometimes? Because it's just little things that you want to dig in on that doesn't make any common sense. You know, we're trying to improve an area that needs improvement. The other thing that this affects drastically is density. Right-of-ways, you cannot count right-of-ways in your density calculations, okay? You can easements, but not right-of-ways. So the minute I lose, the right-of-ways go away, I lose density, which means I lose a unit, maybe even two. So I just don't understand how I got here, staff recommending, get the right-of-way so you can put your fence up. Now, I was told yesterday, well, now, well, we changed our minds now, it's about the fence permit being allowed in right-of-ways, that now there's a newer process that the city manager can now approve a fence going across the right-of-way. Well, they've had my building fence permit for months. Well, why wasn't I notified that they changed the rules? Why am I here tonight? I just really aggravated that I even have to go through this with a recommendation of a denial. So I'll be happy to answer any of your questions that you may have. But I will pass out to you two pages out of my pre-application showing the exact location of the existing conditions. And on page two of this is the site plan with the townhome development that I presented to staff, that they knew all along that's what I was doing. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have about this. I just don't understand why staff would dig in on a ten-foot easement that it can't be used for anything.
Hold on.
I would appreciate your support in the vacation. Thank you.
Hold on. Member Spidey, you had something you wanted to ask him?
Yeah, I have dumb questions again. Okay. Are these alleyways paved?
No, it's grass.
It's just grass?
It's just grass. Never been used by the city of Titusville in the last 50, I've lived here since 1971. Mr. Severs might have better knowledge than me.
I know you're cranky, Mr. Royce, but don't get cranky.
But I can't, I don't remember anything ever being there, ever being utilized in the last 50 years. So why, well, all of a sudden, would it be, something magical happen in the next 50 years?
Okay, where are the, are the alleyways the H part of it?
It is, ma'am, it's.
Okay, so that's, okay, I can see that.
See, these dotted.
I do.
Okay, those are the.
Okay, and those were to service maybe something that was there before?
There's currently no sidewalks either in this whole parcel. I'm putting them in.
I realize that. I just need to know why. I'm trying to help you out here, okay? But I got to have questions, okay? And it may be stupid, but these dotted lines, I don't know where the alleys are. I see one alley that is the bridge of the H, correct, turned sideways. I need, see another two alleyways that are parallel to each other, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. But they do not exist in this grass lot, correct. Are these other dotted lines housing sites?
No, those are the lot lines, the existing.
So it's platted out?
Although it's, it's not a subdivision, it's just the old lot lines from ages ago.
Okay.
And this is from a registered surveyor, okay? So this is from a surveyor showing exactly where these right-of-ways and everything's are.
Yeah, it kind of shows that you have an issue with property to the east now. If his is accurate and alleyways are linear, I mean, they are grid, linear, you have an issue with the other property next to it.
There are no alleyways on the other two big.
Remember, an alley is 20 feet in the city of Titusville, it's not 10 feet.
It is. Trail, we call it trail.
Well, like you were mentioning, I mean, there's homes developed on the east side of it, and on the west side, I mean, I know, like what Brad was saying, is they don't line up directly, you know, it's not exactly accurate, but I mean, if you were going to go to the east, you'd be cutting through someone's yard no matter what. So, I mean, my personal opinion, you know, I go through that area annually to do what we call litter index, which is a judging of dump sites and just blight in the area. And this area is considered a high blight area because people dump right here on this parcel.
They do.
So my personal opinion, I think that, you know, his improvements would, you know, beautify the area, which I'm all for. And especially if there's no paved alley or anything else like that, what's there to lose? I mean, we're not using it, and we haven't used it. Why, this guy's going to make an improvement to the area, I think we should allow him to do so.
Woody, how many units, please? What's the proposal? You don't really have a proposal, is that the situation?
Well, my proposal is you vacate the right-of-ways as proposed.
Right, and then you plan.
And not tie it to, because any, if, I'm in a concept stage, okay?
I understand.
So I want the flexibility to move things as I get staff comments when I go through site plan, and to say that things are going to be, and it affects my density, you know, all those things. So any development that came in would have the exact same request, regardless of what the site plan looks like, because it splits the properties all up.
I think we got it. Are we good? I guess we're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, are there any other cards on this?
Before the applicant leaves, I'd like the commission to ask the applicant his response to the staff's recommended condition.
Okay. Mr. Rice, if you'd come back up and respond to the question?
I'm sorry.
It was.
In the staff report, on page thirty-four, the recommendation, after, of course, you've read, that the staff recommends denial of the request, the applicant should, if the city council or this commission is inclined to approve the vacate request, and the staff recommends that the driveways be constructed as part of an approved plan for townhome development over the entire vacated right-of-way, and I would like the applicant to respond to the recommendation by staff in the report.
Problem is, the two easements going across don't line up with any of my driveways. The only one that does is the one that goes down the center. And the bigger problem is, if you don't vacate the right-of-ways, I lose density, which means I can't do the development that we're trying to do. That's the, really, the bottom line. I'm losing density, and I can't afford to lose the density.
Vice Chairman?
Have we closed the public hearing?
Not yet. Are there any other cards?
No, sir.
All right, so we'll close the public hearing.
As Mr. Rice indicated, I've watched this property since 1968. Unfortunately, in my prior role, had to get after the property owners to mow the property, clean it, place liens against it, foreclose those liens, et cetera. And it's about time somebody does something with this parcel that has been kind of a blight upon the community. In reviewing the criteria, in my mind, and the only one that staff seemed to have some difficulty with was the first one, consistency with the comprehensive plan and the language, "The city may vacate street right-of-way only if it does not prevent reasonable connection for existing and future public transit, pedestrian, and non-motorized and motorized-vehicle trips." In my view, based upon the other properties surrounding this, I believe that the request complies with that section. Therefore, based upon the criteria we are to consider, I would make a motion that we recommend to the city council approval of the vacation without any conditions. I think this property needs developed.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. Can we take a vote on this?
Member Bobbitt?
Yes.
Member Spidey?
Yes.
Member Hare?
Yes.
Secretary Richardson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Severs?
Yes.
Chairman Williams?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Were you going to stick around for the other item? So the next item is an ordinance, a draft ordinance relating to pervious pavement, and I'll turn this over to Senior Planner Quintus.
Thank you. The draft ordinance is fairly simple. It would extend the pervious pavement standards, and this is on page 55, starts on page 55, pervious pavement standards that are allowed within the area of critical concern throughout the entire city to incentivize the use of pervious pavement throughout the, all of the municipal limits. And this, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on this.
I just want to point to you guys, I'm sorry, excuse the commission, to page 57 of your packet. That's where the ordinance starts.
Right.
And you'll see on the next page, the red line addition to the code.
What were there? Secretary Richardson?
We've been using pervious parking and pervious pavement since the 70s. And then it was all of a sudden retracted, but we have places like the CVS on Highway 50, I think Dwight, you mentioned Price White Pools, Singleton Avenue Animal Hospital, that are all pervious pavement, and I don't know why we just haven't continued to advocate the use of that. Where did it, where did it stop?
I can't say when that stopped. All I can say is that the code, right now, that credit that's allowed, is only applicable to properties that are inside the area of critical concern. So this ordinance would expand that ability to use that credit.
But some of those places I just named are not in the areas of critical concern.
It's possible they might have done it for their particular purpose because of stormwater requirements in order to help reduce their stormwater requirements for maybe a permit with St. John's. That's possible. I would have to look at each of those to find out why.
Well, I'm advocating this, but I think we did it a long time ago. That's all the questions I have.
I had, what was the, what was the credit on this? What are they going to get?
Seventy-five percent.
Seventy-five percent credit.
Of seventy-five percent of?
Of the pervious pavement. So only 25% of it would be counted toward their impervious.
Right. My opinion, that's a bit high. I think it is. But some of the things that we brought up in previous meetings, I know this is before you were here, but was, I actually brought it up, when we first switched over this with the area of critical concern, one of the things that came up with CVS specifically was, "These work great if you maintain them." The problem is, is that we don't have a program that tests them. We don't have a program that does anything. So what happens is, is you have, you start out pervious, and then you don't. And then the city has no way of validating that, nor do they, it doesn't, and I'm not knocking on the city, so please don't take it this way, nor does the city really want to get into that. And I understand the reasons why. Part of it was a technical, part of it was manpower. But I would. But I would, yes, I want to see us improve and go into more pervious. I, I would love that. I think 75% is too much. And the second part of that is, we don't have anything validating. I, I think it's, it's a good intent, but I, my, me personally, I'm not there. I don't feel comfortable because I don't want to say, okay, let's approve this and then we will fix it later. I think we should fix it before then and readjust, look at the technical side, look at the, the validation side. I still believe 75% is too much. Maybe if you, you come back and maybe the, the higher cost helps justify that, I, I can understand that. It's, it is a benefit to the city residents, but it's not a benefit if it's not working. So, that is all I had. Vice Chairman?
I have a question. The, the report says that they were given a 75% credit towards the size of the required onsite retention ponds, but where is that in the code?
So we attached the technical manual in, which begins on page 59 of your packet. So the code, a lot of times the code, there's engineering requirements, specific requirements like this, will say, will be in the code, but then it will say, refer to technical manual. And the reason why we have the technical manuals allows some flexibility for changes if we need to do that. But in the tech manual, you'll see, starting on page 58 of your packet, 59, excuse me. Let me get to the right page here. This is the stormwater technical manual on page 64 of your packet, which I believe is six of the technical manual. Correct me if I'm wrong. It was here. I apologize. In other words, it refers you to the technical manual, because there's a provision there that talks about specifically that credit. And so the reason why it's in a tech manual and not in a code is that in case it needs to be tweaked in any way, that it could be done fairly easy through a, a resolution. But. You found it?
I believe it's in page 68, 7.6.2.1.
Thank you. So yeah, it looks like it's the last page of the technical manual. Thank you. It's on page 68 here. And so it's a section entitled pervious pavement.
Okay, my recollection of this code was, and maybe it's changed, had nothing to do with the size of the retention pond. The, the people that did this wanted to have a greater area of their lot within the area of critical concern paved, because they didn't have sufficient parking area. And there was a limitation of impervious up to like 40%.
That's correct.
Whatever it was. And so the way they could get additional parking, for example, whether it's at Nation's, the bank on Garden Street and different ones, was by utilizing impervious, pervious paving and they could have larger area paved. And that's the way they helped them ma, meet their parking requirement. Same way too, also with the CVS on, on Barna and, and State Road 50. They wanted more parking and the only way they could get more parking was to have pervious pavement. Mr. Rice, who's here, fortunately, may be able to answer this question, because I don't see this in the code. The entire purpose was, was to allow more paving area in the area of critical concern. And that's the way it was promoted at the time. Yeah, I'm, I'm confused.
It may be correct. We do, I mean, developments that come in, they have to meet the certain parking requirements may have some difficulty, especially in the area of critical concern, because of the maximum pervious requirement in there. A lot of properties, their max is 40%.
And the other aspect, I would like, I mean, this statement here of 75% credit. So if I'm on the Indian River and building a hotel and use pervious pavement, I can reduce the size proportionally by 75%? I, I don't think St. John's would let me get away with it. St. John's might not let me get away with it, but that's what this says. And I'm thoroughly confused.
All right, so are we good? I kind of lost track where we're at. We, we haven't closed it yet, right? So like.
We haven't opened it yet.
Opened it yet, yeah. All right, so we will open this to the public. Do we have cards on this?
Yes. Woody Rice?
Maybe Woody can do it.
Woody Rice, 505 Indian River Avenue. Yeah, I, I can probably give you a little history about impervious concrete. And it came back when we did the, the area of critical concern and then there was, if you're close enough to a well, you're limited to only 25% impervious, maybe 30%, 35% or 40% in the area of critical concern. What pervious concrete does, okay, is it allows the rainwater to filter down through the concrete and go into the soils right there. So it helps the aquifer recharge, and that's what it was all about in the area of critical concern. It did not reduce your stormwater pond directly by 75%. What it did do, okay, the 75% credit that you get is if you have a thousand square feet, okay, of parking and you turn that parking into impervious concrete, that acts equivalent to 250 square feet of impervious surface, because that, the voids and everything in the pervious concrete. Empirically, and the 75% is a, is a fairly good round number. It's, it is a round number, okay? There's empirical equations that you can do based on the design of the pervious concrete and what's very important is the soil conditions of how much is really going to perk into the ground, okay? But 75, you know, a lot of sites are greater than 75%, but you only get the 75% credit. To speak to maintenance and those things, well, first of all, when I came on board with the city, I got every inspector certified in pervious concrete. I also bought them the tools to go out with the infiltrometers and, and actually calculate the two inch per hour minimum requirement on the soils. And they do that in the field to this day, to my knowledge. They're still doing that, okay? They, every developer also, at the end, signs a pervious concrete, I guess contract is the way, but agreement. And it basically says, the city of Titusville has the right to come out and, and say, you have to, you know, we're going to inspect your pervious concrete, we're going to charge you $100, okay? We're going to inspect it, and if it fails, you have to make it good. Typically, the only time you do that, because we don't have the manpower, would be that if there's an obvious failure on pervious concrete somewhere and we realize that this is a problem, then we have the right to go to that site, because we have this agreement that they signed, saying you're allowed to do that. A lot of data has been done on, all right, if pervious concrete starts to fail, okay, how do you rejuvenate it? Okay, there's two methodologies using, you vacuum it and you pressure wash it. And over the years, they've, the study has found that you recapture 95% of the, of the filtration in the pervious concrete when you do those two methods, okay? To my knowledge, we've never had to ask someone to do that. We've never had to go out and say, this is a failure, okay? But, but those are the things that are in place by the city for pervious concrete. So it's just another, it was a tool that was created to help development in the area of critical concern. Well, this is a tool that maybe we should use widespread in the city to help lessen the impervious surface, so we have less area that we have to deal with, more for green space and things like that. The other thing that, that, you know, the area of critical concern was recreated, there wasn't a whole lot of experience with pervious concrete. You know, so we were sort of leery about going citywide at that time, so that's why it was pretty limited. We, we, we've had very good success. Timber Tray, I think it's called Timber Tray, it's a big carp mount system that are in area of critical concern, and they have acres of pervious concrete on that site. It's huge, okay? Pitcha Penny's one, there's, you know, there's a few other ones, CVS that you mentioned, that's in the area of critical concern. But that's how it sort of came about, and it's sort of the lowdown on pervious. I'll be happy to answer any question you may have.
Well, I mean, I'm looking at some of the areas that we have that and, like, we have a, I thought we have a baffle box right there at CVS. Isn't that a baffle box right there?
I don't know about baffle, your baffle box is where your city has them, but, but it's, the CVS on 50 does have pervious concrete.
Yeah, right, but even there, I mean, how are we really going to know if there's failure when we have stormwater all right there? How are we going to link that site? A lot of the sites that were being mentioned, and I know that there's a lot of sites, but they're right there where it's going to run off into the street. So how, is there a?
During a rain event, what you would see, okay, and what you, what you should not see, okay, is that as the rain falls on the pervious concrete, it should be filtering down, not running out into the gutter, okay? So if you start experiencing that, you know, the only time, the only time that, the only time you will see runoff from pervious concrete is when the soils get saturated and the voids in the pervious concrete get filled. And so if you had a, you know, a 25-year storm, which is 9.5 inches, is there going to be runoff from pervious concrete? Oh, absolutely. There's going to be runoff, because it, it just can't absorb that fast, that much rain that fast. But neither can any other system, okay? So.
Well, I guess I'm just saying that, don't get me wrong, I, I would love to see more pervious concrete. I would. I just, I don't like the fact that we give the credits up front and then there's no validation on the back end unless there's a problem, unless there's, because if there is a problem and they can't fix it, or there is a problem, your site is developed. That is it. It's going to be like that for 20, 50 years.
But if there's a problem and it fails and then vacuuming and, and pressure washing doesn't get it back to the standard, then it has to be replaced.
But the other, other part of that is, so right now, it's a manageable, it's manageable. You only have really the sites in the areas of critical concern. If we open it up citywide, can the city handle that? Or are we that confident in this? And the question for me is 75% a good number? I mean, I know that you, yeah, I mean, for you, it is. For me, I, I'm not so comfortable with it. I want to see it reduced.
Right.
I just don't want to see 75% as a very high threshold with no way to validate.
It's not 75% of the stormwater pond, it's 75% of the impervious area. So.
Okay.
Buildings are 100%, you know, 100% impervious. You don't get any credit for the buildings, you get anything of that. And when it comes to the failure and looking at long-term, it, it really is a cost issue. You know, you, you just can't afford to send every inspector all, you know, to every pervious site in town, even now, okay? But that's sort of like the fertilizer ordinance, you know? Who do you send out to be the fertilizer police? You, you don't have the man, the manpower to do it. But if you catch someone, you have the tools to, to take them to task. And that, then that's the key to these type of ordinances and the way they're enforced, because there's a lot of them like that in Titusville that, that, they're, they're good things to have and they're good tools. But to say you have a, you know, a, a parking lot striping, you know, police or this type of police or that type of police, the police every day and go around and inspect, even annually, no, the city doesn't have those type of resources and you really wouldn't anticipate the city will ever have those type of resources to do that.
So in other words, it's really 25% if I'm looking at the tech manual? Maybe I'm asking you.
It, it's 25% of the, as Mr. Rice explained, of say, a thousand square foot parking lot, 25% of that would be considered pervious. I'm sorry, impervious.
Right. Yeah, and I'm looking at this, as Kelsey pointed out, 7.6.2.1. Is it?
Correct, that's the section.
Doable?
25%.
Is it, wouldn't it be better to put that directly into the ordinance?
We don't think so. We think it's appropriate here. The reason why, if you remember, we did the code update several years ago, we took a lot of things that were engineering related like this out of the code and put it in technical manuals. And if you remember, we, things that were policy related, we kept in the code, things that were more technical, we put in these resolutions.
Did we change the area of critical concern?
No, we, no, the area of critical concern requirements and those maximum impervious requirements are still in the code. That's a policy decision.
Yes, but if this.
But they changed some of the provisions.
There have been amendments to that, yeah.
I guess, I guess what I'm getting at is, as we said, as I brought it before, I think that our code needs to be easily understandable, it needs to be where the layman can, I mean, with some degree of difficulty, be able to understand what the city's asking. But then to reference it to a tech manual, and a tech manual is easily changed, easily, more easy. I think, well, I mean, you know, for me, it's more of a preference. I think it should be clear, I think it should be clear. I don't think, you know, it's quite clear in the tech manual. But, you know, I do feel better when we kept on talking about 75, I'm like, that's crazy. All right, that's all I had. Yeah, do we have other cards on this?
Bill Klein.
Mr. Klein.
Bill Klein, 3 Indian River Avenue, apartment 906 Titusville. I just, I don't know much about pervious concrete and a lot of the details, and I know you all will have to figure that out. But I'm thinking that different types of pervious concrete probably has different amounts of perviability to it. So I'm thinking when you write your standards, like Mr. Rice was saying, that he can demonstrate how pervy is the concrete he's designing, but I'm thinking that in your, when you write up your standards, it'd probably be good to describe the perviability and the amount of credit is dependent upon the perviability. That's the only comment I have.
Thank you. Any other cards?
No, sir.
All right, so we'll close this to the public. I do feel a little bit better after Mr. Rice came up and talked. He's a good witness for staff. Vice Chairman?
General, generally speaking.
I would say I'm in favor of pervious pavement. However, we have a three ordinance on the horizon. Hopefully, we have a low-impact development ordinance on the horizon. Hopefully, we have a better definition of open space in the PD and perhaps other provisions. And I see these issues all interrelated. And if you piecemeal it, you make one provision here, you may regret it. I, I have huge concern about the impact this could have if we, if we in fact have less size retention areas, as the staff report suggests, and the impact upon the Indian River. I don't know whether we've properly analyzed this yet, but I really would prefer a low-impact development ordinance first, or in conjunction with this, rather than piecemealing this. Again, I'm in favor of it, but I think we should table this item, this council should table this item and consider these items together. The low-impact ordinance concept has been in the comprehensive plan since 2018. It's time to get on with that and move that forward. And therefore, I, I just say tonight, I cannot support moving forward with. And therefore, I, I just say tonight, I cannot support moving forward with this because I think there's so many gray areas or uncertainties that exist as, as to prove this at this stage.
Okay, so is that with a motion?
I, I'm open to discussion. Like, I'm, I'm, I'm making a motion to table the item.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm asking, is if you're wanting to make a motion to table it, but then you need to, to basically say, when can we bring this back up? It can't be indefinite. Or, you know, tabling would be good.
I have no idea when staff will be moving. I know in January, they're moving forward with some tree ordinance issues. I don't know the status of the open space PD or the low-impact development.
I'm going to refer you to page, um, the summary of action that's on page 98. It's the attachment I attached to that summary of action. This is the October 8th summary of action from City Council. So this is the, the matrix that Ms. Onge, the previous agenda item, gave you. This is the matrix that the staff provided to City Council as for discussion items related to land clearing, tree protection, and long-term strategies. And so what we presented to City Council was, there were some quick wins you can do right now, some short-term changes you could do to the code, and then there's some long-term strategies you might want to consider. And one of the short-term ones, one of the quick wins, we, we thought was expanding this impervious, this pervious pavement credit outside of the ACC into the rest of the city. So that's what we're proposing here. If your recommendation is to table it and continue it, roll it into a much larger ordinance that talks about low-impact development, we're under the gun to create something anyway on that, absolutely. We have until next year to really draft something to propose to you according to this comprehensive plan. So that, if that's your recommendation, we'll, we'll bring that to the City Council.
I mean, that, that would be my recommendation.
Okay.
Any motion?
Okay, is there a second? Okay, um, can we take a vote on this?
Secretary Richardson?
Yes.
Member Spideau?
We're, we're, uh, for tabling, yes.
Member Bobbitt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Severs?
Yes.
Member Hare?
Yes.
Chairman.
Yes.
So this, this action of yours is, we'll send that to the council, informing them that you recommended that City Council also table this, based on the comments that it should be rolled into a much larger or low-impact development ordinance. Is that correct?
Yeah, correct. And because they're all interrelated, in my mind.
It sounds like then, Mr. Severs, you're asking it should be interrelated with a much larger ordinance with a tree ordinance, too. Is that correct?
Yes, tree ordinance, open space ordinance, low-impact ordinance.
Is that, I probably would like to ask for a motion from you that that is your collective recommendation, or, or maybe I should provide those comments to them? Because it sounds, to me, at first, I thought maybe this would be, you'd like this to be rolled into a much larger low-impact development ordinance, or should it be rolled into also the tree ordinance as a much larger package?
I would want it in the tree ordinance also.
Okay.
But I'm just expressing my view.
It, maybe, Mr. Severs, if you can make a motion on that, and then if the board agrees with that, that that would be your collective recommendation, so that we specifically know what to tell City Council.
My motion would include rolling this into the tree ordinance and low-impact ordinance.
Okay.
Because they're all interrelated.
Second.
Okay, I'll, well, not all. Can we take a vote on this? I'm sorry, I have, before we-
No, you're okay.
You're good?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so can we take a vote on this?
Member Spideau?
Yes.
Member Bobbitt?
Yes.
Member Hare?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Severs?
Yes.
Secretary Richardson?
Yes.
Chairman Williams?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Um, the next item is related to the expiration of CUPs, but before we go into the agenda item, I just want to go back to 9D, just to clarify something about the right-of-way vacate application that was submitted and considered. On the previous version of that agenda item, we had some incorrect information that had on the cover sheet about Indian River City. That's incorrect. The version that you had before you tonight that you considered was the correct version. We had published a wrong version. But it did have the correct title to it. So it was referring, it had the correct titles related to, this was for right-of-way vacate application number 2-2019. I just want to clarify that for the record. Also, that item will go before City Council, not this Tuesday, but at their second meeting in November. They believe that's the 26th of November. Okay. Well, that'll, unless you have any questions about that, I'm going to turn it over to Gabriel to complete the next agenda item.
This will be 9F.
Page 70. This proposed ordinance involves amending the code to allow conditional use permits to remain active as long as the associated building permit is active. It does not change the expiration date of a conditional use permit, but simply clarifies that a building permit would allow the conditional use to remain active and would consider, it would consider the building permit as activity related to the conditional use. I'd be happy to answer any questions. The, um, on page 72 is where the red line starts. And in both places, 1 and 2, a language has been added that if the applicant obtains a building permit prior to the expiration date of the CUP, that the CUP shall not expire so long as the building permit remains active. It's my understanding that in order for a building permit to remain active, the developer has to have an inspection every six months, and it has to be for a vertical structure. And the deletions in B and C are for language, antiquated language that's no longer applicable, that was required by state statute during the economic, uh, hard times that came after the recession. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I have a few questions. So is there, was occupational license, was occupational, occupational permit? What is it? If I was to have a business, I know I have to have a business permit, but, um, is it a business permit or occupational?
It's a business tax receipt, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, yeah, right. So in the past, what it was, was that for, let's say that it used to be, vehicles here in downtown weren't allowed to sell cars unless they had a conditional use permit, okay? But at the same time, they had to meet the conditions and they had to have their, was it business permit or occupational license? Business?
Those are the same. They're just different names. The business tax receipt and occupational.
So, so the conditional use permit is contingent upon them, to, to have the business, they have to meet the conditions, correct? That is in the conditional use permit. So the, in the past, the conditional use permit was contingent upon of you keeping it, allowing to have it, that you had to have the business permit, and it couldn't be expired for over six months. After six months, then everything went away, they had to start over, right?
Correct.
So why the change? Why, um, why say now that, what is the difference in this? If you're not meeting the conditions, but you can, because right now, the language looks to me, I haven't met my conditions, but I can get a building permit. And if I have a building permit, then my, my conditional use permit that I haven't quite fulfilled yet can be active.
Um, the purpose was to address situations in which the building was not completely constructed by the time that the expiration would come around.
Right, so the current process allowed them for extensions. The other, the idea behind my intentions of conditional use permits is when you come in and you say, I have a use, I have a conditional use permit, or I want a conditional use permit, and I have an intent to do this, okay? In the past, it was one year. Within one year, you must commit and submit that you've done these to qualify within a year. And then I think you could ask for a one-year extension. Now it's, it's more, but point is, is that I don't understand the, the need for change, but it also seems to me to be, to act as a potential loophole, to give them the ability. It's either you commit to do something and you make those commitments, or you don't. You don't leave the door open for four years to say, okay, well, I'm going to do it now. Do you follow me? Does it make sense what I'm talking about, about you can get a business permit and not fully engage in your CUP? Or am I off-base on this?
You would not be able to obtain a, an occupational license until the building was constructed and you had a certificate of occupancy for the building.
But, I mean, I guess what I'm talking about is, because we've lumped everything in conditional use permits. I am, I am lumping everything into this. You may have, um, I've seen ATM, ATM recycling had the conditional use permit, and it had things to do with their fencing and stuff like that, and I don't know if it's valid anymore. But the point is, is that I know we've gotten away from conditional use permits, but it seems to me that it's working just fine. And so I guess what I'm trying to understand in part is, why the change? And, I mean, I know the language from 2007 or '09 or whatever it was, the state legislature. I know that that's old and done, and you can't really apply something that's over 10 years old. But, um, why, why just say, fine, we're going to go four years? Why not make them stick to what they, they said?
When we were, we were requested by City Council to come up with this ordinance at the request of a citizen, and to look at how this could be clarified better. Because the situation was, if you can think of it this way, you have an application for a conditional use permit, and they get it approved, but then they have a certain amount of time to get it established.
Mm-hmm.
So let's say three years into it, and then they submit a site plan, and it takes them longer to get that site plan approved, or they got it approved, and now it takes them a little longer to get that building permit approved. So that, that could probably take two years. Now they've extended beyond now that four-year timeframe, and now the CUP is, is expired. But yet, now they've got all this construction halfway done on the property. Do we tell them now they got to go through the process again? What this is supposed to do is try and help clarify a situation like that, where if they have a, a permit in place, and we spoke with the, the building official on this, you know, say, the scenario came up, he would look at that and say, well, if you got a building that's going to be approved as part of that conditional use permit, you've got a building permit issued, um, you know, maybe it been issued right before that actual expiration date. That expiration now has been extended with the life of the permit. And there are conditions with any building permit, regardless if you got a CUP or not, that you have to maintain that with certain inspections to, to prove to the building department that you are continuing with it. So, you know, they let, they let the building permit lapse for any reason because of not fully, fully through with it. That, their expiration of CUP then falls with it as well. So that's what this is probably, this is really trying to establish and clarify those kind of nuances that happens when someone, you know, is unable to get that use started towards the end of the expiration.
Like, so are we talking maybe heights, or what are we?
CUP can, remember, CUPs are applicable to anything that we apply to, depending on the zoning district. In some cases, yeah, height. That's true.
But what I'm trying to get at is, we've, um, we've opened up the gate to everybody on this. And that's why I would say you either commit or you don't commit. It shouldn't be used as a speculation tool to say, hey, by the way, we got additional density, or we got additional height. I'm, my, my point is, is they should commit. I could understand maybe administrative, but, I mean, um, I don't know. That's just my thoughts. Uh, Mr. Bobbitt?
Just for clarification, because I'm not 100% familiar with the CUPs and everything. So if you have a CUP that's issued, and you get held up for about two years, but your, your construction begins, if you don't have your construction start by the time your CUP expires, like, at that point, like, is it kind of, you know, mute to even have a CUP until you can actually get your construction going, or is that a requirement before you can begin construction?
So, can you clarify your question?
All right, well, I'm just trying to figure out, with the, with the CUP, if it expires, do you have to have a CUP to be able to begin construction?
If the, if the use is only permitted by a conditional use, yes.
Okay. And so if the construction is held up for a few years, because you need to get the permit and everything, is there a way, like, what is the process to get an extension on a CUP? Is it extenuating, or is it, like, hey, you just need to fill out a form in City Hall and then you, you're good to go?
Correct me if I'm wrong, there's a, I believe there's a one-year extension that can be granted by the city manager or designee. And, uh, you want to add anything?
Right, there's a, in that same, you'll see in the ordinance there on page 72, that there's a provision there that allows for that one-year extension. Maybe approved by the city manager, as, as Gabriel stated. And there is a, there's an administrative process for that.
Okay. In, in my opinion, a lot can happen in a few years. I mean, if you, you've been delayed getting a permit, I mean, for whatever reason, whether it's paperwork or anything else, conditions can change for the city to where we might not want to continue with this project, especially if it hasn't even been begun. So I think to have a mandatory time where it's like, okay, you haven't met your requirements within that timeframe, we need to come back and take a look at this. I don't know if this is really what applies to the I-4, ISOR, but I don't know if you're familiar with that or not. But it's a building that's been constructed for about 30 years and is still under construction. Um, yeah, so, I mean, it's, it's a common joke in Orlando. So, I mean, to me, changing this would almost open up the, the possibility of having one of those locally within our city. So I think having a set timeframe, whether it's a year or after a year extension, or maybe even a two-year extension, if their project isn't complete and they're operating, I think we need to have them come back to the table and, and reapply for some things. That gives them accountability for what's going on. Now, I understand if paperwork holds up their permits, I totally understand that, maybe we put a, a, like a sub-line in there that if it's just a permitting delay, then maybe we go from there. But if they're under construction four years, five years past when they originally got their license or their, their permit, that's not, that's not working. So we need to call them to the table at that point, in my opinion.
Chairman, I'd like to address a couple of points. The application for a CUP could be for both new construction or an existing building. And for new construction to begin, of course, the building permit would need to be obtained from the city. And so my understanding of this ordinance is that if a building permit has been issued, which may have been issued toward the end of the four-year, five-year period of the CUP being issued, then this ordinance applies only to those situations where we have an active building permit that would have gone through the process of the city's building review in order to grant that building permit. And this ordinance would allow that building permit to continue such activity only for the life of the building permit in order to finish out the construction of that process. Now, what you're saying is, the reference to the time period, which, I think you can ask the planning staff, how long is a recommended period? And different jurisdictions may have different answers here. I think that information may be available at the table below. Our code says four years with a possible extension of one year. And so that, I think, is what you're talking about.
Correct.
But the building process, the building permit process is the additional language.
Okay, so, I mean, if they broke ground and, and they're doing construction and they were just, they got a late start because of permitting issues or something like that, I could definitely understand, understand where this would go. But if they haven't broke ground, for whatever reason beyond, they're just waiting on paperwork to go through, I think at some point, we need to look at it and, and make them go back through the process, at least to renew, because our needs might have changed at that point. We might need to add additional concerns. And if it just keeps extending, while they're, you know, while they do have the, the building permit, we don't really have a, a place to say that. permit, we don't really have a place to say that I'm not sure about, because I'm, you know, still new to this, that we can go back and say, hey, we need to add some additions. A lot of things can happen in four or five years where we might need to add additional conditions.
Mr. Bobbitt, it sounds to me that what you're saying is that there should be some kind of construction happening.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they, they need to have broken ground at that point.
Okay.
Member Spadell.
My concern is with a project that has become an ISOR, it has to have been at least a four-year. It's self-financed. Is that, is that the project we're talking about on US 1?
This would be applicable to any property that would be required to go through a conditional use.
I'm gonna tell you that there's one that, I, I am concerned about the look of this city, overall and individually. And I'm especially concerned about how people come up and down major. And a large property that changed the use from hotel, I think, or motel, to condominiums has been ongoing for four years. They're not abiding by landscape provisions. They've got in-between, and they're always having construction, dumpsters and things like that. I know that the property is self-funded, and that was the excuse from city manager, but that's gone on for over four years at least.
I believe you're referring to the old Randolph Inn. Is that correct?
I don't know what it was called, but it was, it's, what?
That one's been going on for several years. Used to be the Quality Court.
That's right. That's right. That's what it is. Yeah. And is it an ISOR? As a resident of this city, it's an ISOR, because of the length of time it's been permitted to carry on. Are we talking about the same thing?
I do not believe that property was approved through a conditional use permit. However, I think the situation you're describing is similar to what Mr. Bobbitt is describing.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
So, yes.
And that's a concern. So if we continue to, to give you, you know, these unlimited conditional uses until you get your act together, or until you can fund the project, should have you, should you have funded the project to begin with? Shouldn't there be some kind of limitations imposed? Are we talking about the same thing, Mr. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Okay.
Just so you know, that property, I, we can certainly check to see where they are in the status. Unfortunately, if there's six months timeframe between, you know, getting your permit issued, and then having to get an inspection, you know, that, those things can get, and then they're slowly doing their construction. It's kind of hard to enforce unless we have something with.
Oh, I'm not picking on, I'm using this property as an example.
Understood.
But I'm also saying exactly, I think, what Mr. Bobbitt is saying. If this is continuing with anybody, I think maybe I'll just clear some land too, and, you know, pile up some material. Maybe I'll get around to it next year. You know, I'll put the dumpster in, you know, then, then I want to, you know, I can continue on. Then you have an entire mess in the city, similar to the one on US 1 right now.
Good. Good. Okay. Secretary Richardson.
I don't know if many of you young people remember the game show, I've Got a Secret. Aren't we talking about the assisted living facility that you're representing?
Yes.
Okay. Understand that. There's something, when it came up before city council, there was something odd in that, and that's why council, your applicant asked the council to consider that, right? Okay.
That it?
I'd like to hear from.
Huh? Want to hear from Woody?
Let's hear from the public.
Okay, Woody, if you could come up.
Let's hear from the public.
He waited all this time for us to shut up.
Okay, Woody Rice, 505 Indian River Avenue. And, yes, actually, I, I went to city council on petition's request for the public and asked for some way to help my client, which is an elderly lady that, that bought an existing site that had a CUP, okay, that is good until April the 12th, 2020. Okay? So it has not expired yet. And it, it's a big project, okay? The construction timeframe is probably nine to 12 months. She probably bit off a little bit more than, than she should have, okay? And the problem is her financing, because the financier, investors, and everyone said, well, all right, we, you know, we get involved, we loan the money, I mean, are we good to go? And, and I can't, and the way the code is written right now, if you don't have a BTR, you know, in your hand, on April 12th, whether you're in construction or not, you're done. Okay? So no bank is going to finance her. No investor wants to get involved with her. She has them lined up, but until we get this change, because they don't want to get into the middle of construction, and the city come along and say, whoop, your CUP is done, and you gotta stop construction, and, and here you go. Now, will the city probably do that? And, you know, I don't know. I'm not an attorney, you know, Dwight, I don't know if equitable stop was, it would be something that would be enforceable in that situation. I just don't know. But, you know, the investors and the banks are scared of this because of the lengthy construction timeframe. And if you think about it, CUP can be for just about anything, okay? It may not require any construction. And so pulling a BTR the next day after you get your CUP is not a really big deal. But if you have a construction time period that's nine or 12 months long, that shortens your CUP by nine or 12 months before you can get your BTR. And all we're saying is, we, we want, once we pull our building permit and we start construction, we want to be assured that the city won't say your CUP is no longer valid, and we can't do what we want. After we financed it, we built it, we designed it, we did all that. And that's, that's what we're looking for, so the finance people and the investors feel comfortable getting involved. And she bought this property, I don't know, maybe a year and a half ago?
About a year ago.
Look, about a year ago, and she, to this day, this is what's holding up her financing, is because they look at, at the deadline with the CUP. And that's why we went to city council and said, listen, can you help us here? And this was the methodology that we thought was best, at the least amount of impact, because I can't imagine that, and the reason why we thought it was the least amount of impact was because, you know, any CUP that had already started construction, okay, the city's probably not gonna go out there and say, stop, and your CUP is no longer good. Okay? We just need the assurance. That's what it's about. And so we really, really appreciate your support, because without this, then the project will never meet the CUP deadline with the occupational license or business tax receipt.
Member Bobbitt.
Mr. Rice, if you can come back up. So if this ordinance went through, yeah, yeah. If this ordinance went through, and, you know, you get the extension, the CUP, roughly, how long are you estimating until you'd be able to start construction?
When would we start construction? We would, well, we've held up, the permit, my plans are at 95%, ready to submit. But why spend money right now that if this doesn't get passed, why would she spend review fees and all these fees to finish things and cut her losses now? So I'm ready to submit the minute this gets approved. And we will get site plan approval with probably 60 days of my submittal. Her deadline's April 12th. We will have our building permit pulled, and we will have our site plan issued by then. Okay? And the thing with building permits, okay, it takes, it takes at least one inspection every six months to keep a building permit active. And the way the ordinance is written is, if it goes inactive, you're done.
So what are the requirements during the inspection? Do, I mean, do you have to have new building, or?
Yeah, I mean, a building will be anything, there's a, there's a litany of inspections for, for a building of this size. There's foundation, electrical, plumbing, mechanical, you know, thresholds, there's all kinds of different types of inspections.
But there has to be forward movement?
Yes, there always has to be progress and forward movement. And that's by building code. Any building today, when you get a building permit, if you don't have an inspection six months, your building permit expires. Even, whether you have a CUP or not, that happens.
Now, is your client eligible for the one-year extension, or is she already in it?
Yeah, she's maxed out. I mean, this project's been going on a long time, and has had many extensions by city council, including hurricane provisions that, that the governor allowed, extensions on development orders and things like that. So the city has been very gracious, okay, with extending this for the past owner, okay? And I'm here with the new owner of the property on her behalf. So, you know, there can't be an argument that the city hasn't been very gracious with the CUP of the extension of this.
Okay. All right. That was it for my questions. Thank you.
Member Spadell.
So if we approve this tonight, it's open to somebody else coming in and doing the same thing, correct, Steph?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And then that's where, it's interesting, I actually didn't have the background in this. I didn't know. Thankfully, we, we have the "I got a secret" person at the end, but, so.
Watch every city council meeting, every code enforcement meeting, every meeting board of investments, somebody else, I have no life.
And that's, and that's one of my issues with conditional use permits. And this is what I was talking about, speculative development. I don't like it when I see somebody improve something through permits, and then it becomes a risk. I don't want to see this applicant harmed. I would love to see the project go through, but it isn't just about this one item. This is about all conditional use permits. That's why I have a problem. It's not just about building permits, right? It's about anything that falls under conditional use permits. So I'm asking, is there an alternate way to accommodate the request without changing the code?
No, sir, this is why we're here tonight. The way, we're, we're limited by what the code says.
So, we're at five years, or where are we at with the permit for this particular?
Well, we do, we currently do not have a site development permit, and we do not have a building permit.
But I'm saying, on the conditional use permit for them, what is the timeframe that they're at?
As Mr. Rice mentioned, the expiration of the conditional use permit.
This is April 2020.
Correct.
When did it start?
Oh, this is more than four years ago. This is, I'd have to defer to Mr. Rice to tell you the exact date when that was originally approved. But I think it was probably 10, maybe almost 10 years. When their, when the particular condition.
So, so if we haven't followed, so I'm just asking, if that is the case, and as I've said this before, why would you possibly want to rewrite code that affects everybody when you have put a Band-Aid on it, and I say, put a Band-Aid on it again, rather than change the code?
If you're asking what, if we can change the code for what?
You haven't followed the code as it's written, if this is 10 years or older. So, don't follow the code, let them extend, keep the code as is. I mean, where am I wrong in my thinking on this if, if this is older than 10 years? And now, the site, I, I know that we've extended, oh, what's the development agreements and all that? Conditional use, my personal take is, is that put a Band-Aid on it. You, you've done it before, but you're saying that you can't do it, but we've already did it.
Williams, I'm not sure what you're referring to. The extensions we adopted, the city has adopted over the years, were applicable to any conditional use permit that would fall under those conditional requirements of these extensions that happened previously and even up to now.
This is saying that the...
This is not, this is not an ordinance that's tailor-made to one particular permit, if that's what you're asking.
No, but this is, the conditional use permit changes, even with the market conditions. What was the total max previously on a conditional use permit?
Well, the, what I, I remember, several years ago, there used to be an expiration of two years.
Well, it started out as one.
Right.
And then we went to two. And then after 2007 market, and then I think they said 2009, they came in and developers said that the conditions, and we can't, you know, we can't get the funding, we need help. The state came in and made some modifications. And then the city said, look, we have to do this. Done. But that being the case, the way the current code is written, if we were to go ahead and get rid of the, the blackened-out red, what does this code, or so I defer to you, what would this permit be allowed to extend to, under the, under the code itself?
The applicant has already, as stated, received extensions to the existing CUP. That's why it has the history.
Yes.
That we have discussed. What you see struck in out in paragraph C is reference to the 2009 market conditions that no longer apply because it's from the market conditions that happened a long time ago. So the different ordinance changes that we've seen regarding CUPs, as you've addressed, Chair Williams, have extended the time period that's mentioned in A1. Now, what I hear you saying is that you'd like to recommend to council that the period of time for a CUP should be less than four years, perhaps. And that would be a recommendation that city council could consider.
But what I'm asking now, specifically, is if the maximum amount of time currently under this ordinance is five years, and that, and this is what, what I'm reading, it says that you cannot extend it past this, is what this is saying to me, right? But we here, we have a CUP that has actually extended that. Is, is that right?
Yes, that's correct, because there has been...
But the code says you can't do that.
There have been tools that have allowed developers to extend the life of their CUPs because of different reasons. Emergencies, state of emergencies have done so, and that has been interpreted to trump city codes. And that's why the life of the CUP has been extended.
Originally. So, but that wasn't, I thought that was for, I mean, I'm not reading it, but I thought that was only for a couple of years on CUPs. And then, well, and then it says one extension for additional four, I don't know. But what I'm trying to ask, and so I'm not hearing, is, is I just need an answer. What does this code currently allow somebody to extend this to?
What this ordinance will do?
No, what is the current code is what I'm asking.
So the current code, without the strike through underline here, as it's currently written, allows, says that a expiration is four years. So you have to have the use in commencement, it has to be commencing within four years. And if you can't do it, you can ask for an extra one-year extension. So what that means is, commencing, you gotta have your site development permit approved, your building permits approved, your, your certificate of occupancy issued, and your BTR already issued. In other words, you gotta have your use going and moving on the property within that four-year timeframe. The issue is, if you're only halfway there, and you come up against that expiration, is the city gonna come down and say, stop, your permit is expired now?
Yes. So, what I'm asking though, is that from what I'm hearing about this site in particular, it's how old, how, when did it get the CUP?
Well, this site received the CUP for height, I believe, if, if Mr. Woody Rice is representing the people who own this particular property called Rio Lago, received a permit several years ago. I'd have to look to see the actual permit, but I believe, I believe it's about 10 years ago. And so over time, it did come up to the expiration dates, and there were requests to extend the expiration dates of CUPs. The, and so ordinances were adopted over the years that extended CUPs, and that caught this particular CUP as well, in addition to others potentially, over the years, over the life, or over the series of expiration, ordinances that were adopted by the city in the past few years. So yes, this, this is not the first time this has come back to you. This is, there's been several versions of expiration ordinances that have been reviewed by you and adopted.
This highlights my point. If, this is already passed, I think, what the code allows, even with all the extensions. And so, where am I wrong in what I'm saying or thinking, or?
Correct. It is, it's been extended based on those previous ordinances.
All right, so, if that being the case, why can't you do it again? Why do you have to do a code change to?
Each time we did it was based on a code change. Each time we did it was based on a code change. With one exception, and that was by a state act, a legislative act.
But 2009 was when we first, when that happened.
We can't extend CUPs if the code doesn't specify how to do that. So we just can't, someone comes in and asks us to extend the expiration on the CUP. If the code, the code specifies how that's done.
I don't know, maybe Dwight, you can help with this. I don't...
Chair Williams, if I may. The statutes and the 2009 market conditions combined were part of the tools that extended the life of the CUP. For example, Florida statute section 252.363 is the statute that is called tolling and extension of permits and other authorizations. And I have seen personally that developers have submitted letters to the planning department that we don't have the choice but to accept, which say that due to a state of emergency and the governor's declaration of the state of emergency, Florida statute 252.363 says that the emergency declaration extends the period remaining to exercise the rights under a permit or other authorization for six months in addition to the told period. The told period is 90 days from the date of the emergency. And I've seen them stacked.
Yeah, but that doesn't equate to what's, what has happened versus what our code says, versus what is actually capable of even happening according to what? It doesn't make sense at all. And it's not that I have any issues with, with the property being developed. I'm just saying...
So I recommend that you suggest to council that they reduce the four-year time period, that the council, that has been enlarged over the past several years. We go back to one or two years. That would be my suggestion for you all to make to council, because you have that ability.
The only reason why this changed historically was because everybody said, "Man, I'm tired of hearing conditional use permits," of what I recall happening, because they were. It was conditional use permit after conditional use permit over and over again. And then, and I understand the developer's dilemma, and they said, "Look, we can't do this." The difference in the building ones, that is difficult to do, it is. But all the other ones, it wasn't that difficult. It's not, it was, here's your conditions. You can do the specified changes or whatever, as long as you do these things. I'm just making the point that it seems inappropriate for this to be the approach. It seems if, you know, council is good with this, I mean, I'm telling you, I'm good with it. But at the same time, conditional use permits, there needs to be a pull the trigger and do what you say you're going to do. And initially, two years is more than enough time to, and this is what was from a developer to, when we extended, to two. I can do everything that I need to do in two years, because they've already done some of the front work on them, so I don't get it. Anyway, Mr. Severs.
Conditional use permits, to my recollection, have changed over time. Initially, they were, for example, a conditional use permit to allow a daycare facility in connection with a single-family dwelling. Over the years, their use has been expanded to include additional heights, allowing a CUP for an assisted living facility. And for some reason, it seems to me, have been treated differently than an ordinary rezoning request, which has no limits. I personally do not have trouble or problems with additional time for CUPs, because so many of these projects cannot be completed within two years, four years, because of financing or a variety of reason, permitting requirements, et cetera. So I don't think the city, as well as other cities, have treated them correctly. That's my personal opinion, because a CUP is, I'm being repetitious. It's no different than rezoning a piece of property from R1B to R3 with a conditional use permit of additional height, et cetera. So the only suggestion I have, I do have concerns about building permits, extension of building permits, and how long though, can they drag out for 10 years? And it may or may not be appropriate, and I'd love to hear from staff or Mr. Rice about inserting in this ordinance, in the event, I'm looking at number one, towards the end, in the event that the applicant obtains a building permit within the time period set forth herein, and diligently pursues construction and completion of the conditional use permit, it shall not expire as long as the permit remains active, or maybe even striking that latter portion of that. My concern with this, like any building permit, they can drag on forever, and that's not right, that's not what you want to accomplish here. So if they can pull a permit and diligently pursue building and construction and completion, fine. So that would be my suggestion as far as a further clarification of the language. But I personally don't really have that big a problem with the CUPs and the length of time.
Senator Bobbitt.
Well, this, and again, there's, I don't know your project or anything else in particular, but this is exactly what I'm talking about. Your project is what, 10 years old?
Well, the project has totally changed from what it originally was.
So then the CUP shouldn't even be applying to it if it's changed?
If, I can answer the question for you. I found a CUP that was approved in 2005, number two for that year, and it allowed for a building to exceed a height of 50 feet, allow residential density greater than 15 units per acre in a shoreline mixed-use zoning. The property is still currently zoned shoreline mixed-use. So that was the approved conditional use permit. From what I understand, it was approved for some kind of condo development. There has been talk about it changing to maybe an assisted living facility. We did not have a formal application to determine, to give you a good answer exactly what they planned to do with it. But that's what the conditional use permit, as approved in 2005, states. A building taller than 50 feet with density greater than 15 units per acre in that zoning district.
So now we're saying that this thing's been around since 2005. This is exactly what we're talking about, that, you know, it drags on and on. And again, I'm not trying to shut down this project, because assisted living facilities are vital to, I mean, any community. But in particular, just for the ordinance itself, you're really opening the door and cracking it open for people to just slide in there to, oh, well, you know, we've got our building permit, okay, well, we planted, or we installed a planter, so we've got forward movement. Six months later, well, we put another planter in on the other side of the property. And, oh, well, we had some doors dropped off. That could just continue and continue, kind of like what, you know, some of the other commissioners are talking about. And I'm right here with the chairman. I think with this project in particular, it's gone so far, I don't see why we can't push it through, but without changing the ordinance to open up the floodgates. And I...
So that when it comes to zoning, you have to apply equitable to every property owner that might... So you can't, you can't create a zoning code that is specific to any particular property owner. It's, ownership is irrelevant. So we, so whatever you come up with, it has to be equitable to everybody who has a right to be able to develop a piece of property. So we can't create an ordinance that's tailor-made to one particular situation or property.
I can tell you that from my previous experience with the conditional use permits, this would have been in 2005. By 2007, it would have had to be most likely renewed, and they would have had to come back in, back in the day. So, I mean, that in itself isn't equitable to the previous people that have had to do that.
Well, I found, I'm looking in the record here of the conditional use permit, so in...
And I don't want to just, here's the deal. And so I want to get off of talking about this project specifically. Although, I want to help, but I know that I can't, because it's an upcoming project, so, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that there's been, you know, when you come up with an ordinance, it has to be written in such a way that it's fair to everyone. And it may capture other, I mean, if you're, it may capture more than one or several permits that might be under review or approved, and capture those, and they'd be extended. And in fact, in 2009, with the economy downturn, and the legislature came up with their act to extend all permits throughout the state of Florida, as long as the applicant or property owner submitted a request for such an extension, we had to grant that. And that was applicable to every conditional use permit or building permit or site plan and permit we had in place at that time. So they asked, we had, and they met the criteria of the state law. We had to grant it to them, regardless of what our code said. Then, that doesn't negate the fact that the property, that the city itself also has adopted subsequent ordinances extending conditional use permits by ordinance. In other words, by amending this section of the code here. And it may have caught one or two or more conditional use permits in the process, and therefore, they were extended automatically as a result. Again, we can't tailor, we try not, we are not supposed to be tailor-making ordinances that are for specific projects. Now, conditional use permits, the code is written in such a way where each zoning district has a list of uses, and then it will tell us which particular use is required to get a special conditional use permit. And so the reason for that is, for example, church are unique-ish situations. You know, depending on where they're located or size, they have unique implications and impacts. So that's why we're probably, most churches and most zoning districts are required to go through a conditional use permit. So we look at it and look at, as long as they meet all the conditions, and if there's something unique about that area that's going to have an impact, we'll probably apply or ask for an additional condition on there, then it gets approved. But generally, you're supposed to treat them the same, but sometimes the conditional use permit process is available for certain uses because of the uniqueness. Another example of a use that would be required to go through a conditional use permit would be a daycare, as mentioned earlier. Daycares have different impacts, depending on where they're located. A retail store in a commercial retail zoning district most likely is not going to require a conditional use permit. It's, the zoning is structured in such a way to allow them permitted by right, because we all know what those impacts are going to be, as long as they meet the code requirements. So conditional use permits are really specific, supposed to be applied to unique types of uses that have unique impacts potentially, depending on where they're located. So some zoning districts require that. This particular zoning district that we're talking about, for Mr. Rice's applicant or client, is in a shoreline mixed-use. And at that time, there, if you wanted to increase your building height taller than 50 feet, the code at that time stated that you had to go through a conditional use permit. Code right now, as it's written, says that you cannot even get a conditional use permit to go over 50 feet. So what they're saying is, what they're trying to do here, when they ask city council to, you know, consider an amendment to the code to allow extending conditional use permits, is that in their particular case, they would like to have their permit extended so that they can, they won't have to be barred from having a building taller than 50 feet. Because right now, there isn't even any option right now to go through a conditional use permit for a building taller than that. They would probably have to go through a variance.
So why was it changed to where originally there was the continued use permit, where they could go over 50, and now there's no option for it at all?
So there has been a long debate in the city, even, I think, Mr. Severs and Mr. Williams and other members here can probably tell you, is that a long debate about height in the city of Titus, especially along the water. And in 2007, there was, I, if I recall, there was an attempt or an ordinance that was adopted to limit height along the shoreline, especially take out that provision, that option of using a conditional use permit in that particular zoning district. And there was also a referendum attempt as well, which failed, to max out heights throughout the city. So there have been several ordinances over the years to kind of allow height in certain places, restrict it in some of the areas, because there's a big debate about height and being able to protect that along, especially along the shoreline. But that, those have been different ordinances that have impacted Mr. Rice's client.
Can I ask you one question? Is this coming before city council Tuesday or later in the month?
I believe this one is going before city council on Tuesday. But they will have a first reading, and their public hearing, I believe, is the second meeting in November. I'll have to verify.
Then I move that we table this item until our next meeting, to give staff the time to research it and the applicant to respond.
Yeah, I wanted to say something real quick before, I mean, I knew...
Yeah, exactly.
All right, then I'll say it afterwards. Is there a second?
Yes.
All right, so we have a motion and a second?
Before you make your motion, before you make your vote, now that you have a second on that motion, could you clarify, what would you like staff to research?
All we have is this one page and the ordinance. We're lacking a lot of historical knowledge about it. And we're talking in circles. It's gone on for an hour.
If I may interrupt before you call a vote, I'd like to just point to the agenda from September 26th, when staff Peggy Bisaka presented advisability to city council. There is additional information there that staff has already researched. I'm sorry, it wasn't included in the agenda packet tonight. We could print this information and hand it out to you tonight, we could table it. It has, the headings on this sheet is "Evolution of the CUP expiration provisions" with the history and "Options to amend the CUP expiration language" that was presented to council when advisability...
Will give us time to digest it.
We can do that. We can certainly view table, we'll bring that information back to you.
I had one question before we vote, and that was, ALFs. I thought the state came back and said that you can't put ALFs in coastal hazard areas. It is considered a coastal hazard area now, which the condition has changed.
Part of the site development permit, the applicant will be asked to provide information related to that, and that would be determined during that process. That's true, there is a state law that we had to abide by to approve new policies in our comprehensive plan related to coastal high-hazard areas, related, and come up with new policies related to sea level rise. And one of the, some of the uses that the state law says that we should try to discourage in coastal high-hazard areas are populations that are vulnerable. And assisted living facilities, nursing homes, hospitals, things of that nature, are types of uses that the state law tries to ask local communities to discourage in those areas. I cannot say this property is inside a coastal high-hazard area.
The map that you gave us before said that this was, was part of the coastal hazard when we started going through that.
The...
Upon a border, a motion to table takes precedent.
Yes.
All right. All right, let's do the vote.
Member Spideau?
Motion to table, yes.
Member Bobbitt?
Yes.
Secretary Richardson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Severs?
Yes.
Member Hare?
Yes.
Chairman Williams?
No. I have enough information. All right, so that was the last agenda item. And we will go to petitions and requests from the public present. Oh, no, hold on. All right, so we'll go to city reports.
So we included four council summary, council summary of actions from September 10th, September 24th, October 8th, and October 22nd. The two that I just want to point out is, again, the October 8th one, we included the matrix, the tree matrix, research and recommendations that Peggy Bisaka presented to city council. The final one, though, has to do on October 22nd. We did include an attachment there that I think you should be aware of. There was action made at that night about the retention in the area of concern ordinance. We included the adopted ordinance. If you recall, this is the ordinance that talked about the 25-feet mean sea level rise requirement that you addressed. We, that adopted ordinance is on page 109 of your packet. We included, several of the conditions that were recommended by the P&amp;Z were adopted with some changes. And the changes are described... And the changes are described in a matrix that was provided to city council, which starts on page 112 of your packet. And so it describes the conditions that you had recommended to be added to that ordinance. And then the next column has staff's recommendations for changes to it, or go ahead and keep that particular condition. And then there is a final column there that talks about comments, kind of helps justify some of the changes. So that information we provided to you to help, just as an informational item about the, the action that was taken about that particular ordinance. I'll try and answer your questions you have about that. But that's all we have as far as reports.
All right. So we'll go to petitions and requests from the public present. Okay. And we'll go, well, hold on, Chelsea, you have something you want to add?
Two things. With the resignation of Secretary Chambers, we have an appointment on the November 12th city council meeting for a regular member. There's two applications for the council to consider for that position. A second item is that the staff wanted to inform the commission of an advisability going before the city council. Brad, did you want to do that? I have it open.
You have it open? Okay. I have a, yeah, I can pass this out, actually.
Okay, so on Tuesday night, kudos to the Planning and Zoning Commission for your insight and suggestions here. We have a reclaimed water master plan advisability going before city council. That's what Brad's handing out. So thank you for your input. That concludes my report.
Okay. Member Severs?
Concerning the advisability, I certainly recall this item and was told, and it was expressed at a city council meeting, that all the reclaimed water was committed, and there was really none available. Subsequent to that, I spoke to City Attorney Broom and asked for a copy of any agreements that indicated that the development in the south in the city, there was indication at a council meeting that one million gallons was committed to the development off of Grissom, and asked to see a copy of that commitment, that is agreement to provide. I subsequently was advised that there, in fact, was no written agreement, and that only the first phase, they would say, probably was committed, which was about 100,000 gallons. So there was 900,000 gallons available. And my question is, has the city council been informed of that? Because one representation was made to them, and subsequently, it turned out that, I guess you would say the facts were a little bit different.
I did not personally inform the city council of that information, but I could find out if they've been informed by other people.
I guess, I assume that will all come out in the master plan, that, if that is in fact done. I'm glad to see that the, there will be a plan initiated dealing with supplying reclaimed water to the north and south areas, critical concerns, so as to aid in the recharge of that. So I would certainly encourage that. Thank you.
Member Bobbitt?
No comments on this one, I'm not familiar with it.
Well, no, what I'm, this is at the end of the night meeting, is there anything you'd like to add or comment on or?
Uh, no.
Okay. Member Spideau?
Yes, sir.
Member Hare?
I have something else.
Okay. Member Richardson?
Yes, just one item briefly. I had the pleasure of going to that seminar, what's exactly the name of it?
I can tell you the topic, yeah. I'm sorry?
You hosted it.
I did, well, it was-
It was a blur.
It was about traditional neighborhood development.
Yeah.
And then we had a representative from AARP come and speak about middle, middle house, middle, missing middle housing.
Yeah. And Gabriel was there, and Chelsea was there as the, also the chairman of the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. And I would encourage every member to go to those type of things. We saw a lot of things that really surprised me as far as Titusville's average age. And it came up about, we're third in the country as far as dangerous intersections for people crossing. In fact, just last week, there was a gentleman that tried to get across Knox-McRae. He was hit by a car and he died. And we've really got to consider this, what we can do to prevent this. It, it actually, what they showed us was it looked like an upside-down pyramid. That the average age in Titusville is much older than we even thought. And that brings, you know, handicap parking, accessible parking, all kinds of things. But that was a real good seminar, and I would encourage the members to attend those APA seminars.
As soon as we have the presentations together, we'll pass us out, those out to everyone's for you to review. Yeah, we'll, we'll continue to try and offer those, the seminars.
Okay, is that it?
Yep.
And Vice Chairman Severs, you had something else?
Yes, sir. I, I think it's appropriate that the Planning and Zoning Commission communicate to the city council that thank you for them allowing and authorizing Mr. Barnes to appear before the city Planning and Zoning Commission to explain and answer questions we may have concerning ordinance 27 and 2019 dealing with retention in the area of critical concern. It appears as if based upon that appearance before the Planning and Zoning Commission that some information came out that was crystal clear that the draft ordinance as originally prepared did not adequately address protecting the recharge area in the area of critical concern. And as staff has indicated, there were five different changes made, which is reflected on page 110 of, of our agenda. I certainly would have preferred our ordinance because it contained additional objective criteria. And one of the complaints that made at the meeting, and I had somebody furnish me with a transcript of that meeting, expression of concern that there was not objective criteria in a lot of city ordinances, and that staff has to bluff and bluff and bluff and finally cave in. And one of the things that we did in our ordinance to clearly specify the type of soil and permanibility of the soil, we expressed that a minimum of 50% of the dry retention shall be located in the pre-development areas above 25 feet. We expressed some concerns about locating these and the impact upon wetlands. Those items were not included, but the, the end product was so, much better than the original product. And I think we need to recognize that and thank council for presenting that, allowing him to come here. The, the other issue that I wasn't aware of that's in the transcript, which sort of blows my mind, and I'm going to hand down to you a short excerpt from that. Some pages. And Brad, if you would like one, certainly. And they were talking about the, the 25 feet, and in particular, where I said important for, this, it says, "For the person who made the comment that the retention ponds are not above 25 feet for this specific development," obviously, they're referring to Brookshire, "that is incorrect." There are two datum by which elevations are determined, and an old one and a new one. And the old one was originally shown, but if you use the new datum, it is above 25 feet. The staff, has any idea what they're referring to?
No, sir, I have to.
Well, I find that-
Well, we do have an expert in the audience that probably-
Well, in, in any event, I find it interesting, this for the first time is mentioned at a meeting in which this ordinance was drafted based upon the information that was supplied. And I can give you a copy of, of what Peggy Bisaka was referring to. The retention bonds is shown at 23.70 feet mean sea level. And I gather she now is saying, no, that's really 25 feet above that elevation, and therefore, it complies. I would like to have clarification from staff. We spent all this time and effort on something that may or may not have been meaningful or may or may not. Obviously, when I look at something supplied by the engineer and it says 23.70, and as you can see from the agenda, the ordinance that was approved, the retention area is backfilled above 25 feet mean sea level. And they're saying this is above 25 feet mean sea level? It's totally inconsistent. In addition, assuming for the moment, there is different datum, new datum methodology. Whenever you're amending an existing ordinance, it is totally predicated on the data at that time in 1986. If you want to change that datum or methodology, you have to change the ordinance. The 25-foot elevation was chosen as to the recharge area based upon the, the methodology at that time. And to interject, and by now, staff construction saying that is all different today, you can't do that simply that way. And I would like clarification on this because, depending upon the clarification, I think we need a formal legal opinion from the city attorney's office as to whether or not this ordinance applies to the new datum, the old datum. And there needs to be some consistency if you want to change the old methodology in 1986 by which we chose the magical lines of 25 feet mean sea level. Then you have to do it properly. And this is not proper to do it by a staff interpretation as such. I don't see it as all being proper. And so this sort of blows me away that somehow there's a different interpretation of what 25 feet mean sea level is. And there may be a new methodology, and I assume there must be. But you just can't change the rules of the game just because you feel like changing the rules of the game because they suit a particular developer and applicant. That's what occurred on this project to begin with. We construed the ordinance to mean something it didn't mean. And I, I hope this is not happening again. So I would like, I, I hope the rest of Planning and Zoning support my request. Okay? I'd like to get more information.
We'll certainly do that, we'll come back with something.
Okay.
Okay. And I have nothing, so we adjourned.